The City of Oconomowoc Common Council Meeting for today, the fifteenth, or six, excuse me, the sixteenth of September, has appropriate meeting notification been made?
It has, Your Honor.
Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Ms. Shell Pepper, would you please lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming. Would you please call roll?
Alderman Altman-Clothe has been excused. Alderman Ellis?
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Here.
Alderman Mulder?
Here.
Alderman Shell Pepper?
Here.
Alderman McConnell?
Here.
Alderman Youngworth?
Here.
Alderman Rosick?
Here.
Thank you. We have two public hearings this evening, as well as if you'd like to make a comment on any topic to the Alderman, a public comments section. If you'd like to make any comments in the public hearing and/or the regular open session, please hand in the blue cards. Mr. Gallo is walking around, so if you have, I'll announce you and call you up at that time. Thank you. We're going to open our first public hearing, which is a text amendment for Urban Park Zoning District, the Village Green. The purpose is to hear comments to amend Section 17.105, 17.106, 17.202, 17.305, 17.504, 17.608 of the city zoning ordinance. I have to read this. "The proposed ordinance would create new zoning districts called Urban Park UP that allow public uses such as, but not limited to, parks, open space, trailheads, community gatherings, and on publicly owned parcels in the suburban areas of the city. The proposed district creates and identifies intended uses, building setbacks, driveway width, landscape points, and signage requirements." Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mayor, Common Council. We're doing something tonight that we haven't done in a very long time. We're creating a new zoning district. Little bit of the history with this, because it's gotten a lot of interest, is we took the Village Green area for rezoning to match the downtown zonings, which is MC, Mixed Use Commercial, and the Plan Commission did not think that was a good strategy. And the reason we were going to rezone it to match the surrounding area was because the downtown has zero setbacks along the front and the side, and they have relaxed standards from any water feature. But the Plan Commission decided, no, that's not a good way to go. You don't want to zone the Village Green to MC, which has commercial in it. The public perception would be that the city's doing something, potentially getting rid of the Village Green. So we went back to the drawing board, and we created a new zoning district called UP, Urban Park. And we then created the uses in there being what the mayor suggested. It was, you know, parks, open space, trailheads, that type of thing. So there's no commercial use would be allowed in this, and there's no residential use, there's no condominium use, anything like that. So we went around, and we got different setbacks, reduced setbacks, similar to what the other surrounding properties have, in a new district called Urban Park. We had to amend a variety of sections. As Mayor read off, there was a whole laundry list, because I went through the zoning code, and there's, guess what? Zoning districts are mentioned in the landscaping section, in the driveway section, in all these other sections. So we went through each one of those, and we covered that in here. Like landscaping, there'd be no points required. Driveway width, there'd be a minimum of 40 feet. That matches, and 45 at the curb line. So that matches the other districts. So I had to put it in a bunch of other things. The Plan Commission did review this. They were happy to see that we're going in a different direction. These were some of the specific requirements in the code, because I know that first one's a little hard to read. But what the uses would be allowed is government and civic buildings, public safety, athletic courts, community gardens, open space parks, and antennas and towers. Now, towers and antennas are protected, and they, by state law, are required in every zoning district. Antennas on existing structures are permitted by right, and then any new tower can be conditional uses. So I made it that. We have similar requirements to our MC district, which is the surrounding area with minimum width of 25 feet, lot coverage of 100. There's no principal structure setbacks, because there is no such thing as a principal structure in a park. The park is the principal use. You have accessory structures, such as bathrooms, and stages, concession stands. There would be zero setbacks. So you could put a building, if we decided to put bathrooms in the Village Green, you know, right up to the adjacent property line. There'd be a building height. Principal building does not have it. There is no such thing. Accessory building maximum of 30 feet. Paved side yards, that's the same as the downtown. The Plan Commission did recommend this. They had one change, so I want to talk to you about that. It says, "Urban Park," this is what it would be in the code. UP is intended for publicly owned lands to be used as parks, open space, trailheads. They didn't like the word "intended." They actually wanted that changed to say the UP is reserved exclusively for publicly owned lands. That way, someone else can't buy a property, zone it UP, and then do something with it. This is only for public properties. You know, on the agenda tonight, the next item, the next public hearing, is the rezoning of the Village Green. But this could be used in other public parks as well, so it's not a spot zoning for just the one area of the city. There could be a variety of UP areas. So with that, the Plan Commission did recommend approval, and I will hold my remaining comments until later in the agenda.
Sounds good. At this time, the public hearing is open. I have one card for the Village Green area from Laura Gibbs. Now, Laura, you notice that there are two items on the Village Green. You're welcome to speak at both items, or at one, or wait till the second one, whatever you prefer. You bet. When you come to the podium, please state your name, your address, and what community you live in, and please share your comments and thoughts with the Alderman.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Laura Gibbs. I live in the City of Oconomowoc. We've owned our home here for 25 years, and just really love the atmosphere and everything going on here. And I also want to thank everyone here for all the time and effort you put in, because it is really apparent how much stuff you guys do, and how much time you take. I really don't have a whole lot to say about the bathrooms on the Village Green, but I don't, personally, I just don't see we need bathrooms on the green. I feel like there's bathrooms, you know, other places that people can go to if we were going to do that. When I see the costs of what we've spent at City Beach, I think things get out of control, and I think it's kind of a scary thing that we should be putting up another building like this for bathrooms that I don't think we really need. I would vote for putting up the bathrooms along, et cetera, the wall there, especially if this zoning goes through, which I really like, because it gets rid of the setbacks and everything. And if those bathrooms were there, they could just put them there for six months, or eight months, or whatever, and I bet, I don't know the costs on that, and I would be interested to know the costs on that, but I think it would, how long would it take to recoup, you know, the difference between porta-potties and a bathroom that we would actually build? The other thought I do have about it is the lot, I don't know which it is. It's the lot closest to that bird statue. I think that, I don't know why we don't utilize that for bathrooms, or there might be one space across the street by the businesses there. Maybe there's a small space there that's already built out. All we have to do is put the plumbing and whatever. And the plumbing at City Beach wasn't all that bad, and the build-out wasn't all that bad. Some of the other things I'll talk about later, I don't agree with, but that's my take. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And just a comment for you as well. The Village Green is going to be discussed later in the meeting, and you'll see some of that, so you may want to stay if you have time. It's on the agenda.
I thought we were talking about the Village Green now and bathrooms and the rest of the agenda.
This is just the public hearing notice. We're going to be talking about the zoning and this new ordinance, but then also, there's going to be a discussion later this evening about that area and some ideas for the council to discuss, so you may enjoy staying for that.
Okay. I'm sorry, I went askew here. I didn't realize that. I think it's a good idea, get rid of the setbacks. And when we do, you know, build out that way, or something gets built on Rock, with Rockwell, I sure the heck hope that they don't make any changes to any of the zoning there, any of the setbacks in the front or the back. We're not talking about City, about.
No, no. We're staying there. So thank you very much. Okay. Do we have any other comments that anyone would like to share on the urban zoning district? Without hearing any other comments, we'll close this public hearing for this text amendment and move on to our next public hearing for the Village Green rezoning. The purpose is to hear public comment to rezone the total of 1.45 acres at 105, 109, 111, 121 North Main Street, and 104 East Wisconsin Avenue. Parcels at 111 North Main Street and 104 East Wisconsin Avenue are zone institutional public, and the parcels at 105, 109, 121 North Main Street are zone mixed-use commercial. The request is to rezone all five parcels, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20, to Urban Park Zoning District. The purpose of the zoning is to have a consistent zoning for the Village Green area, public park, which reduces building setbacks and would allow for the potential construction of a public restroom. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mayor. That pretty much summed the whole thing up, what you just said. There's five parcels at the Village Green. We've never combined these officially, and there's multiple zonings out there. So if the Urban Park Zoning District that we just had a public hearing on, it seemed favorable to the Common Council, we'd like to use it for this first application, which would be the Village Green. These are the parcels. We said there are lots 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. The whole area consists of 1.45 acres. We'd like to rezone the whole thing. Right now, it's a mix. You can see the existing zoning is right here. Some of it is IP, institutional public. That has a 75-foot setback from the water. It also has a 20-foot side yard setback, so it really alters where you can put structures. And there's two parcels in the middle there. They used to be a restaurant and then a retail shoe store. Those are still zoned, the pink area, which is MC, Mixed Use Commercial. Initially, we took this to the Plan Commission to change the whole thing to MC, to get relief in the setbacks. They didn't want to do that, so we decided to create a new zoning district. This is what the zoning map would look like, UP, Urban Park. So these are the lots, and these are all of the addresses and key numbers. If you add this all up, it equals 1.45 acres. The Plan Commission made a recommendation to the Common Council to approve the rezoning out there, the 1.45 acres, all to UP zoning.
At this time, the public hearing is open. Do I have anybody that would like to make a comment with regard to the Village Green rezoning of those districts as described by Mr. Gallo? Seeing no public comment or no one coming forward, we're going to close the public hearing on the Village Green rezoning, move on to our next item. I'd like to entertain a motion for the minutes for September 2, 2025. Someone?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Next on our agenda are comments and suggestions from citizens.
I have one card on a different topic. This is also from Laura Gibbs to talk about Buddy's concession. This would be the appropriate time. If you'd like to come forward, if you'd please reintroduce yourself at the microphone, that would be great for the public record.
I'm sorry, I just, I don't know the protocols well enough. Laura Gibbs, 908 West Lebel Avenue in the City of Oconomowoc.
Can we bring your microphone a little closer? There you go. Thank you.
Okay. So this is about the City Beach, right?
This is about, whatever you want to talk to the council, Ben. On your card, you said the concession stand.
Right. Well, the concession stand and the boat moorings, the spaces. So I don't know exactly what, you know, the contracts were between everyone, and the back door type of things going on. So you can correct me, whatever, if I'm wrong, but, you know, first of all, I just want to say, I'm really, really, I love the launch. I'm really glad that there's been improvements made there, but I really don't, I think the ban shell is like the most iconic feature, you know, building in Oconomowoc. And I think it now is like, I hate to say this and use this word, but I feel like it is blighted. The building that was built, it's beautiful. It's very nice, but it doesn't fit the space, especially when we are so conscious of, you know, all the different architectural, you know, styles built here and there and everywhere, and how they, you know, serve the city. I really feel that before they changed where they made that, the change of that building, that they really should have brought that forth and talked to, you know, the community and everyone else, maybe like outlined it and say, "Let's go see what's going on here" or something. But I feel everything is cramped together and very hard to navigate around there for people. I also thought when we did the Parks and Rec building, I thought the Parks and Rec building, we did the lower level so that we could have, both for the cold and for the summer, concessions and bathrooms. We put a lot of money, that was what we agreed on then, but that is not what has happened over there, and I don't know why. And I don't know why the city has paid so much for a concession stand. I mean, I guess I understand that there is bathrooms there, and that's valuable, but there were bathrooms there. They could have, you know, for what they put into that, they could have, you know, done a little bit of spiffing up and, you know, remodeling, redecorating, rehabbing, whatever you want to call it, to those areas. I also don't really, I'm not really happy about how it cuts off the view from the lake. And it's something we can never get back, and it makes me feel really sad. I don't think that it's appropriate to have a private bar on something that the city people are paying for. Not a bar, but a private club on the patio. And when I look at the costs, $92,000 for stairs and a railing that we can't even use or have access to? I don't know how this got through. It's beyond my wildest imagination how that can, you know, is okay. Also, when I saw the tent go up there and we were driving by, I said to my husband, "Wow, Oconomowoc is living large these days." We have all lived through Wisconsin winters. We know what Wisconsin winters are. We all knew that you weren't going to be able to build, you know, during the harsh winters. So, but it is misleading, and the information that was put out in the agenda, to say that it had to be done in the memorandum or the resolution by May. What's important to get done by May was the launch, so that the people of the city and surrounding cities and everywhere could get their boats in the water. Concession stand is like way down the low, the podium on that. And when I saw that was $50,000, we're not growing money on trees, guys. So I'm pretty unhappy about that. I'm not sure if we're talking about two moorings, or if we're talking about four moorings. Can someone just clarify that?
Yeah, you've raised up a lot of different questions and had said some things that I think, after the meeting, we can have one of the staff kind of go through those detailed lists with you, because some of the things that you have questions on, your perception is different than the factual information.
And, right.
And we're happy to share with you.
And that's what I opened with.
And get the information.
I don't know all the details behind it.
Yeah.
I'm looking at three pages that I see in an agenda.
Yep, absolutely.
And responding to that.
Perfect. But we'd be happy to set up a time to meet with you.
Right.
The public period is to share your thoughts with Alderman. It's not a dialogue going back and forth to answer questions.
No, I do, I know that.
Because we would never be able to finish.
I know that, but I guess, you know, I just don't, I don't think that someone should get four moorings. I think the person who has any space should pay what any other person is, because it's a premium, and we can, and we should. And I think everybody here, as far as any of the costs involved here, have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of this city to make sure that we are fiscally responsible for these things. We hit a contract for a certain amount of money, so why is now that contract, we're end up paying, I think it's like three times as much? What? How does that get under the radar?
Well, and you're welcome to stay, because some more of that's on the agenda.
I definitely, I definitely will. But I also think that the boat moorings should not have a 14-year.
Okay.
I think it should go year by year, just like everybody else who uses those slip studs.
Thank you. I may have you wrap up, if that's okay.
That's okay. Thank you all, very much.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions from anyone in the audience? Anyone that would like to share their views with the council this evening? Seeing none and not having any additional blue cards, we're going to move on, council, to our consent agenda items 7A through F. I'd like to entertain a motion. Someone?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None opposed, moves forward. We're going to start with our committee reports. We'll start with finance. Consider Act on Resolution 25-R, 3310, exempting the city from the Waukesha County Library levy, 2025 tax for 2026 purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Common Council. Each year, the city is required to adopt a resolution if it anticipates or wants to be exempt from the county library tax. Often, this is on the consent agenda. This year, as we were actually really close to that line, we did keep it not on the consent agenda to make sure it was an item for discussion. So the county library tax is 20.15 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. Our proposed or preliminary 2026 budget actually puts us just over that threshold, at 20.16 cents per thousand, and that incorporates all of the requested funding that the library had asked for. And that's a combination of additional other revenue streams that the library's receiving in '26, as well as outpaced growth in our equalized value. So as we look at that as a mill rate, the amount dedicated to the library compared to the value of the equalized value, it really brought our ratio down very close to the threshold. So it's something we have to do and turn over to the county in order to be exempt. I can confidently assure you that we will be exempt for the '26 period, and in order to be exempt from when the county issues that tax, you'll need to adopt or approve this resolution.
No, thank you, and thank you for bringing it to the attention, as it is something that we have to be much more careful of moving forward. Any questions or comments for Steve, our finance director?
Just a.
Alderman Mulder?
Just a comment around this. This was a couple of years ago. We were debating whether we were overfunding our libraries, because we were so far above this county requirement, and now we find ourselves on the other side. It's not a, at that time, it wasn't a good measure of how much service, and now it's not a good measure of how much service we should provide. It's a, you know, and it feels like it's archaic, and hopefully the state will take a look at it. It's unlikely, but I think we probably will be looking at this issue, and having to be creative about it, you know, for the years to come, so.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Someone? Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman-Clothe? Aye. Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper?
Aye.
Alderman McConnell?
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Under our next item, consider Act on the first, excuse me, consider Act on Resolution 25-R, 3311, the final City Beach concession building cost. Mr. Frye?
Yes, sir. Let me just get to the document here, so I can pull that up. So when it came to the concession building, we had done an RFP, or what, thank you for the reminder. So we had done an RFP very early on in the process, you know, asking for some of the provider costs to build a building. That's what we asked for. Hindsight, should there have been some more thought put towards that? Yes. We can see that tonight, so I'd be foolish to say something different. The item before you tonight has two components when it comes to the cost of the building. And just bear with me while I get to it here real quick. So the first component is work that was done around the building, more specifically, retaining wall, added steps coming down from the ban shell to meet the new elevation, which was set in order to meet the ADA requirements in budding up to the boat launch. That work was completed by the contractor that we had already hired to do the boat launch project, because they were right there. It was a difficult site to begin with. Bringing another contractor wasn't going to work out. So we had worked with the contractor we had. They completed the work that we had asked them to do, and that came to a cost of $59,791.10. And so that's a separate item. That's the first component of the building cost that we're talking about tonight. The next item, the next component of the cost, is being requested by John Sutner, the person that we partnered up with on this building, and it had to deal with costs that he ran into that he did not know at the time that he provided the proposal to the city. And that was for soil stabilization and engineering, reinforcing the foundation and the slab material selections for this. And then a third component was the tenting and heating of the building. He had anticipated being able to start earlier on the project. There was some delays going through architectural, and not all on architectural, I'm not pointing fingers there. There was that, and then the block that was finally approved for the project was not one that was in stock. So there was a delay in getting that to the site. And so for that reason, we did have it tent, he, John, on his own, tented it and heated it in order to do the construction through the winter. We did have a May deadline for the opening, because we, when we put out the RFP, didn't want someone to win the ability to build the building there and then sit on it for a couple of years. So we wanted to make sure that when City Beach was ready to go this year, that we had a concession building there. So that's why that timeframe was put in there. So John was requesting half of the cost. His total costs are listed on the left, and it was pointed out that these numbers don't quite match up to what's here. We can look at that. But what he was asking for is half of that cost on the three items that I talked about. That comes to a total of 75, or $72,852. We had a couple of other items that were decided on after the building had already been under construction, and that was for coating the floor in the lifeguard area, and then an electronic lock system that we use on our other park restrooms. That came to $15,571. So when you look at the costs that are being asked through John Sutner and the couple items that are for the city, that total is the $88,423. Once again, the Yankee portion, the things that we had to do for the building is $59,791, being requested by John, and it's $72,852, and then we have the $15,571, and that shows you that comes to a total of $148,214.10. Those are the items that we're talking about tonight. John is here, willing to talk about it, so if you have any questions or comments, we can have John come up and discuss that.
Well, and I think maybe we start with that. John, do you want to come up? Mr. Sutner, please tell, for the record, just state your name and where you live.
John Sutner, W375, N7833, Tamara Court, Oconomowoc. Also own the cornerstone here on 24 South Main Street, and also had the buddies down at the beach for a long, long time. I think it's, this is year 14, I think. This project has been passionate for me, to say the least. I stood here a year and a half ago and said I'd put my money where my mouth was, and I have, to the tune of way more than I bargained for, but that's okay. I'm not asking for all the extras, because I don't think that would be reasonable. I'm asking for extras, only half of the extras that I really couldn't control. And... And I couldn't control them because I didn't know. Now, is there a way to know? Probably. I didn't know what I didn't know, and that's probably not an excuse. However, my entire purpose for this project, which I signed an agreement that I'm giving this building to the city. I'm walking away from it in nine more years. I mean, we'll still have the concession contract, hopefully, if my kids want to do it because I'm going to be retired somewhere, I hope. But ultimately, this was about Oconomowoc. It wasn't about John Sutner. It was about building something there that's going to be there forever, that's for everybody to use. And I know there's a misnomer about the patio that people can't use it. Right now, it's closed off, and it is closed off during the week. We don't want people up there that can hurt themselves. But I promise that this is a public building. And yes, during events, it's rented out. I'm not going to lie, it is. But during the week, someone wants to go up there, go ahead. But we also have to be cognizant about it being policed and it being safe. So everything's relative. I think the building's beautiful, and I'm very proud of what was built as a public-private partnership. And I stand here asking for a little leeway, but I can promise you, my heart is 100% Oconomowoc. And no matter what happens today, that will not change. So.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. I'll open it up to the council. And council, if you'd like to either have John or Mark talk, we can bring either one up, or if you'd just like to make comments, we can do that. So I'd like to open up any comments or questions, and we'll go from there. Alderman Spiegelberg?
Couple initial questions. So you're asking for half of the heating and concrete cost. Is it true that you potentially asked for more, but then it was kind of settled?
It was very true.
Okay. And then, and then the 50% was settled down?
Well, we, I, it was actually 50% of overall cost. And then I looked at some things and we talked, and I'm absorbing more of it.
Yeah.
And it is what it is. And I realize that, it's part of the deal, okay? But I'm asking for a little reprieve because my pockets aren't bottomless either, and I did not know that, and I'll say this again, I didn't know what soil stabilization was. I, but I do now.
I think that was a surprise to everybody.
And so with that being said, I didn't know. And when it happened, I still move forward. I didn't stop. I didn't get a lawyer. I didn't do all these things. I just, I'm doing it. I didn't know what the costs were going to be, and here we are. And I'm still absorbing the majority of the extras.
And then one more question before I give it up to others. The lifeguard area, the floor coating, and the door control system, from what I understood from our meeting prior, is that pretty much a, we, is that pretty much a reimbursement of us to you?
Yes, I, I.
Because that was done under your contract?
It had to be paid for.
Right.
And I didn't know about it. I put, I put my locks on, and that's really not sufficient, if you think about it, because they have to be electronically and all that stuff. And the locks that are on my doors, they're electronic, but they don't self-unlock and open and close and stuff at certain times. So I understand why they had to do that. That was an additional cost. Had it gone through a different process, that number would be a lot higher, and that's why we kept it.
Okay, thanks. That's all for now.
Other questions?
I just have a couple of comments. Number one, thank you, it was, it's, it's beautiful, right? It's extremely disappointing, as we talked about earlier, that these costs have, like, right? It's, that's, that's probably the worst part about this is just, you know, if we had gotten ahead of these a little bit sooner, that would have been, that would have been nice. But you're coming here, you're, you're willing to take on roughly half of this.
A little bit.
I'm, I'm slightly encouraged by the way it's being funded, specifically not coming out of taxpayers' pockets necessarily, so that, yeah, probably the biggest disappointing thing is just the, the high cost of this coming all of a sudden now. This is something we have to take a look at. I had another thought. Well, I think at the end of the day, those are, those were my, my main comments.
For the, for the record, for the audience, funding from this will come out of the TIF district. That's, it incorporates and also helped us with the funding of the boat launch. So it will not come, it will not increase your property taxes.
Thanks for coming tonight. So I'm struggling with this one a little bit because, A, like, I don't want to discourage city and private partnerships because I think we can accomplish a lot of really great things that way, and this is a way to provide something to our community without burdening the taxpayer anymore. My, my two big issues with this is, first off, the soil and stabilization thing was step probably one in terms of building, right? And that's 20% of the overall cost. At that point, we could have come back to this council here and said, hey, we're already looking at $100,000 right out the gate over what we thought it was going to cost. There was an opportunity for us to go back and say, hey, this is no longer something that's palatable for us, it's not going to be the deal. We could move it, we could look at other options. That's fail-safe number one, where I think we really missed an opportunity to avoid this extra cost. And then two, I'm looking at some of the line item cost here, and we want to be a partner, right? And I would say, a true partner would say, hey, if you're asking for money from the city, some of these bid, or some of these prices, to me, seem out of control, right? I, I don't know what process was gone into making sure that you were getting the lowest cost vendor, like we would do here as a council. That's what we do. We go out to bid and we take the lowest cost. $90,000 for a staircase, $16,000 to paint a 1,500-square-foot building, and.
That's inside and outside.
Still, I mean, I, I can go through a lot of these and say these costs just don't seem legitimate. I do know what we're asking for is the additional cost, but if we would have been more responsible on the cost of the actual building, the gap would not have been so much. Like, we wouldn't be talking about $180,000 over what we had thought about. So I think there are many opportunities along the way where we could have been more responsible with who we bid, who we did the work, what we did for that building. The communication could have been a heck of a lot better, where we're not sitting here talking about money that's already spent. This is a terrible position for us to be in too, because we do want to maintain a good re-partnership. We want to make sure other potential private organizations want to partner with the city and don't want to tarnish this. But this is a hard sell. I, I've had people reach out and say, hey, my constituents don't want to spend more money on this. And so I, I'm kind of put in a tough position here.
Other questions or comments from the Aldermen? Alderman Spiegelberg?
With all due respect, Alderman McConnell, and I understand what you're saying, but I don't know that we don't know that he was responsible in going out for bid. He's a very successful businessman, and I'm sure that he wanted these costs to be as low as possible, just like us. Can you speak to that, John?
I can, and we did go out for bid, and I believe that we got the best, best possible bids. Some of the things were way under what I think were realistic. So I believe that we built this building with the challenges that we have way cheaper than somebody else could have done it. And I was very involved. I, I was down there probably more than people wanted me there. And I mean that, and, because there's probably, sometimes they just wanted me to leave. I wore this on my sleeve, and I still do. Could I have done some things better? Yeah. But I can promise you, I did it the best I possibly could.
Alderman Mulder?
So I see this as, there's kind of three things on this. We're looking at it all, and one, I, to me, the, the floor coating and the door control system that you, you paid for on our behalf is, feels like money that we owe you, I guess.
Yeah, like I said, reimbursement.
So those, it's just a reimbursement for a cost that we, services we ask you to do. So for me, that's above and beyond. I think the cost, you know, you built the building you wanted to build in the end, and so $90,000 for a railing, whether you got a good deal on that or not, doesn't really matter to the city because you bought it. I think it's the other three costs, you know, I don't know if those were, we got favorable or not, but, you know, so it's really, to me, it comes down to the $72,000 that is really the question here.
And that's why I'm, it's what I'm asking for, because I know I made some decisions, but some things I couldn't control.
I'm going to share one comment. I think it's, it's very difficult to do public-private partnerships, and I think everybody does it with their eyes wide open. And true partnerships, when things aren't quite right, you kind of work together to get a solution. It's also something that this is our building, and you put $90,000 into railing, cool, that's ours and going to be the city's owned. One thing I can say as a testament to John is he's been here, and he is really an Oconomowoc guy. I remember the first drowning at, on LaBelle a year ago, and who was down there? I mean, I went down there right away, but there's John with food, with water, with everything from his restaurant, taking care of everybody. And it's one thing that we can always look at things in hindsight, and I think when you look at the letter of the law, you had a contract, these were the expectations, and I think if we had to borrow money, if we had to take this off of the property tax and the levy in that fashion, it would be harder to do that. But I think because of this funding mechanism and because of the real partnership that John has shown, I think this is a very fair request, but it's up to you, council, as to what you want to do with it. Because we want to have closure on this in some fashion, one way or the other, and I think you can look at this in a lot of different ways. But I also look at some other potential partnerships we want to do. And when things don't go well, that's when you see how type of partnership you really have. And those that have done this in business, and I can say I've done many of them on the, on a personal, private level, and when you do them, everybody wins in the long run. And I think, John, what you've created, yeah, we had some problems getting going. That wasn't on John's fault, that was on us because of having to move the building, having, because of the floodplain, because of the soil. There were things that we really couldn't predict, and it's really hard because you don't always know exactly where you are until all of these things come into play. So I'm just going to say to council, and then I let you guys finish your debate, that I'm fully in support of what John is bringing forward because it is the right thing to do. I'll turn it back over to the council. Any questions? Jennifer Altman Clove?
First of all, I apologize for being late. But secondly, just, and you actually said a lot of what I was going to say, you know, and I think if anything going forward, you know, we could put some policies in place as a council to make sure that when we do enter into private-public partnerships, and there are decisions that need to be made, that maybe we have a process for that going forward, you know? And secondly, and the mayor already kind of stole my, my thunder on this, but, you know, John, you have done so much for our community, and we appreciate that a lot. And we also understand and recognize that you were under a lot of pressure with, you know, we had a very hard deadline on getting the boat launch open. We know that our Wisconsin, you know, winters and spring and, you know, the weather is not always in our favor. You know, there's a lot, of course, we can look back in hindsight and, you know, kind of wish it went differently, but at the end of the day, I am in support of this. We still have a beautiful building that we're going to have for a really long time in our community. And again, I just, I really hope the public and your constituents that aren't happy with this really realize the scope of what the Sutner family has done for our community. And, and, and what you've done, and I'm going to be cautious on this, what you've done doesn't give you free rein to do whatever. And I don't think that you think that at all.
I don't.
But in a moment like this, I think it also allows us to give you some grace and come alongside you and, you know, work through this issue together.
Alderman Ellis?
So my question to Mark or anyone for that matter, does this have an effect on taxes associated with our community?
It's not coming from the levy, no. It's coming from the TIF. Indirectly, there's a small amount, you could say, comes from the city, but this amount is, is miniscule compared to other types of projects.
Okay, I'll ask.
It is not, so your property taxes are not going to go up because of this. My property taxes are not going to go up because of this. There's no debt. We're not taking out any debt to pay this amount. Mark, do you have any other comments or Steve?
So.
Go ahead.
Would it be accurate to say that this TIF, because of this additional money, the TIF district will close slower than it would without this?
It will.
So.
Correct.
Now that is probably a month. Or two. But it is true that down the road, the city will get fewer taxed, will get tax dollars free for, for, but that's years from now.
And when, when the TIF is closed, every tax dollar the city gets approximately 36 cents on the dollar. Using this money, the city gets 100% of that tax dollar to pay this off. That's the advantage to the city and to the residents. Steve, did I misspeak in any way?
No, I, I think, hoping this comes through. You described it accurately. It's not expected to extend the closure of the TID. It'll still, projected to close in the same year, so I, I don't, I don't see a negative impact to any property taxpayers in the city as a result of this.
Thank you. Alderman Ellis?
So if I hear proper, we have the money through the TID to be able to, if it passes, pay $148,214.10, and this will have no effect on our city taxpayers.
To be clear, it comes out of the TID V increment, the revenue from the increment in TID V. So it, it is coming, it doesn't impact any of the other city funds. It is discreetly to the TID V fund. It will, it is not projected to extend the life of the TID to recover this payment. It should, it should still close in the same year, whether you do or don't.
It's not answering my question. It's not answering my question. My question is, will this have an effect on taxes for our residents? Myself, mayor?
No.
Karen, whomever?
I concur. Cool. Alderman Rosak?
I just have a few really brief comments. Couple of things that are in this item are the soil stabilization, engineering, the reinforced foundation and slab. I think we talked about that in committee. A lot of that came from moving the building out of the floodplain and other soil stabilization issues. Mr. Sutner, I applaud you for picking up the tab on a lot of this stuff, you know, hoping to get reimbursed, you know, like the, the locks and stuff. I mean, who knows, right? One interesting comment would be, we're, we have a village green discussion here shortly that's also going to include a public-private partnership, and I see some of our possible private partners here in the room, and I'm wondering what they're thinking. If something doesn't go quite right, are they going to be stiffed? So I think it can have a chilling effect. But, you know, with all that being said, I think it's a good project. The other kind of question I had is, if this was fully funded by the government, do we think it would come in less? I mean, really? If it was fully done by the government, do we think it'd become in less than that? I, I have a high doubt that that would be the case, so I, I think this is fair. I'll also just note that we also spent, the city, you know, for whatever reason, we, you know, we had another $60,000 from Yankee Utilities and Concrete. We had another $20,000 engineering fees we didn't calculate. So, you know, any project like this is going to have some problems. And I think if we're inflexible, then we become a tyrannical bureaucracy that says, no, here it ends, we can't have discussion, we can't be flexible. And that's when people, people's lives change, so I'm in favor of it.
Any further? Aldermen Shellpepper?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Sutner, again, we had a pretty thorough discussion during the committee hearing.
We did.
And I want to start out this the same way I started out the other one, thanking you for the engagement that you've had for the community, the investments you've made in the community. You fulfilled the promise that you made to this council with what you said you were going to accomplish with the building. You put out graphics and drawings, and that's exactly what you delivered on, so I, I thank you for doing that. And you're, you're a man of your word along those lines. My first and foremost concern at the end of the day is to serve our constituents, my constituents, the taxpayers, to provide transparency and accountability. constituents, the taxpayers, to provide transparency and accountability for them, not necessarily who the city is doing a public-private partnership with. If we're meeting our contractual and legal obligations and we're serving and looking out for the taxpayer, then we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. I heard a lot of concerns around this table about you and about other developers that might or might not have concerns with doing future projects with the city. I heard very little in terms of actual fiscal responsibility and protection and accountability for our taxpayers. So that's where my angle on this comes from. The agreement with the city was $265,000 or the cost of your building, whatever was less, that's what we would pay you for a 10-year lease. We would get the lifeguard station and the bathroom for that. We would, you know, put out a contract for the concession, for the concessionaire. The $265,000, that was the agreement. We had a hard stop on it. I mean, Alderman Clothe had brought up, Alderman Clothe had brought up, you know, making sure in the future that we have policies to protect ourselves from happening, something like this from happening again. We had a contract. We protected ourselves on the front end, we made sure of it. And I went back and watched the meeting on the, you know, it was like the 17th of September 2024. Multiple times, Alderman, around this table commented on how great of a deal it was for the city. You acknowledged that the cost was going to be way beyond the 265, especially with that second story going in, that that was going to put up the cost.
And I'm not asking for any of that.
Yeah, and you were on board with that, and you were saying, you said, like, I understand that, I get that, and I'm willing to take that cost. Having the 15-year concession contract is going to make this worth it, and with the $265,000 is going to make it worth it. The city has delivered on its end of that bargain. We fulfilled our end of the contract, we paid the 265. Trying to change those terms just fundamentally goes against what I, what I think is right and the way that government should operate, which is to ultimately protect the taxpayer and keep the amount that the taxpayer has to spend as low as possible. I mean, we want to talk about, okay, it's not on the levy, fine. I mean, we're still taking out the debt for it. I mean, we're, at the end of the day, this is still city funds, taxpayer funds, you can twist it however you want to say it. So, so that's, I guess, the ultimate concern I have with it. You do have a 15-year contract still for the concession stand. The actual facility itself, like I said, beautiful, great, great job on getting it done and on delivering what you said it was going to be. The spot and the location left something to be desired. That's not on you, that's on this council, that's on the administration, on the architectural committee. That, I mean, it's, it's okay how it looks now in terms of if you never knew what it used to look like, you're not losing anything. But when you look at it now, you sit at the bandshell, you're not seeing the lake anymore. You've lost that view. When you're out on the lake, which not everyone's privileged to have that opportunity, just like not everybody can, you know, sit on the patio and, and watch concerts right now. But the opportunity to look at the bandshell from the lake has been basically erased. That's no longer an opportunity for someone who wants to be on a boat and enjoy the concerts. Does that have anything to do with the ultimate contract? No, but it informs some of my thinking of how much more I want to spend on a project that I already feel like at some level is, is, like I said, it added, it's beautiful in itself, but has also taken away some things from the community. That's not on you in any way, but if it's an agenda item, it's something that I feel like needs to be discussed. And then lastly, if we want to just kind of talk about overall, I mean, the facility itself and your legacy involved with it, when I go back and look at those meeting notes from September of 2024 and the video, I mean, it was pretty clear that the facility was going to remain Buddy's Beach Bungalow. I mean, that's what you had attested to, that's what you said the name was going to be. It's now the Sutner Family Pavilion, I see a new sign on there, I see a new picture. I'm sure that went through whatever sign ordinance it had to be, whatever it had to do. But again, like just the transparency and accountability, I don't really know when, when it was ever decided that that would become the Sutner Family Pavilion. It's fine, you know, we're happy where we're at now, but that discussion was not had, just like, you know, some of these soil and engineering costs. I mean, we wanted to talk about that, you never knew the soil stabilization. I mean, that was one of the first issues we as a city dealt with when we were doing the boat launch portion. And we spent somewhere around $17,000 of our, on our own to do that. I mean, we've spent somewhere around $35,000 to relocate the concession stand from where it was originally envisioned, and this council approved, and then it was moved administratively without any sort of, you know, civilian oversight, you know, elected official oversight for that to happen. We spent around $30,000, $30,000 to make that happen. I mean, you, we're not asking you to help pay for that in any way. So I even hate getting through this, this whole dirty laundry list of all these things. It feels wrong. It's unfortunate that we got put in this position to have this conversation. I'd start out where I go again. You did a great job, you delivered on what you had to do. We had a great contract, it was a great deal, we should stick by the terms of it. And we shouldn't be approving any additional money outside of the 265, and maybe the 15,000 that Alderman Mulder had alluded to regarding the lifeguard floating floor coating and door control system.
Any other questions from Alderman? Alderman Spiegelberg.
I'm going to actually make the motion to approve this resolution, but with a couple bottom-line comments. I feel that Mr. Sutner has operated in good faith, he's been such an asset to this community. I think this is a fair ask. I think for all of us here on this council and Mr. Sutner, there were some unforeseen circumstances, maybe some things we can learn from in the future, but I think this is a fair ask overall, and I think it needs to be further stated that this is not coming straight from the levy, this is coming out of our TIF dollars with a very miniscule impact on our taxpayers. So I will make that motion to approve Resolution 25-R3311.
Second, Rosak.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please. John, you can sit down.
Alderman Altman-Clothe. Aye.
Just one moment.
I just want to make sure that there was a revised resolution placed at your station for this item. There's yellow highlighted. The resolution did not, the original resolution that I had put forth, I was the one that did it, so I got no one to blame. The portion of the Fonz, if there's anything being paid to John Sutner, that we have to adjust the lease agreement that we had with them. This needs to be a lease payment from the city in order to comply with the TIF rules.
If you'll amend the motion, Karen, I'll second.
Yeah, so I will make a motion to approve Resolution 25-R3311 with the amendment to the resolution as provided by Mark.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman-Clothe. Aye. Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shell Pepper.
Oh.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Onto our next item, Consider Act on the First Amendment for the pontoon boat docking Mr. Betcher.
You want me to move my hand just to throw your stuff on top of it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your pocket tonight is consideration on our First Amendment to pontoon dock leasing. John, in the past, has done, run the, his buddy's beach rental down at the boat launch. In 2024, actually, his agreement had come to an end, and we actually extended it a year to help with the boat launch process. So he took on through 2025 this past year, since we didn't know how this was all going to work out with the launch being open on time. So what we're looking at doing is having this pontoon boat lease added to his concession agreement to moving forward. So it would allow for us to have an agreement with him moving forward from 2026 through 2039. That's a payment over the 14 years for a total of $111,718. John has been a good partner in the past, and this is something we felt that may be a good option for us. With that, I'll let John talk more if he wants to add anything.
John, do you want to explain?
You know, with the cost overrides and everything that is associated with the building, and we were hoping to get our contract to coincide with the concession lease, it just makes sense to have the facility that is operated down at the beach to also have the boat, the pontoon rentals. I asked, and I'm willing to go less if people are uncomfortable with that long of a period of time, I understand. But ultimately, I didn't do it for free. I mean, this year it was $7,000 for two slips, and I, someone earlier asked if it was four, it's two. And comparatively, what you're getting for the other mooring slips, that's much, much higher. And I did a, and so everybody, I'm very transparent, 3.34% over the two-year contract is what it's raised every two years. So it's not staying stagnant, it's staying, it's growing. It's important to have that there to help with the cost of the building. Did we put that in the contract? We did not. Am I asking for something? Yes, if it goes RFP, so be it, but I hope that we can continue to partner. And, you know, I'm not standing on this, I put all new equipment on the water this year, I've continued to reinvest, I give, you know, we donate stuff to the city, whether it be the police, the fire, whoever's raising money, that's what they use. And it gets other people to get to see the community on the boats. Not everybody has an opportunity to live on the lake or own a boat or whatever it may be. And I know there's other people that rent boats. I think I'm a little different than them because I'm probably, I think I give a little back more than most. So that's the plan, I hope that you guys approve it. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Alderman Mulder.
I don't have a question, just a statement. We did learn that we, that other operators had, were seeking information about when this would be going out for RFP again. So I feel it's just inappropriate to, knowing that there are businesses searching for that, to just award this without any kind of RFP, just feels inappropriate to me. With the new boat launch and the award-winning new boat launch, and more and more people are going to, you know, learn about our lake and our beach, and probably the value of those, of that service will go up. It might have already, just by having more people attracted to the area. And then finally, I think a 15 year is just too long, we can't see that far into the future. I think a five year is appropriate because people do, whoever operates this needs to make an investment in their equipment, so two years, you know, kind of precludes you maybe from wanting to invest that much upfront, but 15 years feels too far. So I don't support this, I think we need to have an RFP that both considers the cost we would get, but also the care of the operator. You've done a wonderful job, I see your boats out there, everybody's having a good time. But we also had two tragedies a few summers back, and we don't want just any operator on there, we want a quality operator that, you know, properly takes care of their clients, makes sure they're aware of boating safety, and is there anytime there's a problem. So I don't think this is a cost-only issue, it should be an RFP that considers a lot of different things. But others have expressed an interest into bidding for it, and I think we're, I think we should allow that.
So I'm a little confused, are you proposing doing a five-year with John and then do an RFP or start?
I'm proposing we do a five-year, go out to RFP for a five-year.
Okay, gotcha, okay. Alderman Altman-Clothe.
So I was on the Park and Rec Board when this came up last time, and we had two people that actually responded to the RFP, one obviously being you, who we awarded it to, and then another company that already operates boats on Okachi. And I remember in the discussions on the Park and Rec Board, one of the reasons why we chose to go with you, and I'm not saying that the other company had any involvement in this, but we were just coming off of the summer with the two tragedies. And, you know, one of the things on the Park and Rec Board that we discussed was the fact that none of the drownings occurred on any of the Buddy's boats, that we never had issues. You know, we checked in with the police department, they had no issues. And it just, especially coming off of that summer, it just made sense to go with the operator that knew our community, knew our lake. But I'll also agree with you, 15 years, 14 years? And John, especially when you said before, like, I'm going to be retiring, it's like, well, then who's going to be? And I've met your children, and your children are incredible, don't take me wrong, but, you know, it's like, well, are we going to get 15 years, 14 years, whatever, it seems a little too long. But I would be in favor, I mean, I'd like to see us maybe even split the difference and just grant it to you for another seven. I mean, not to muddy the waters here, but just knowing what we went through last time on the Park and Rec Board, I just, I think it's a waste of time to put it out to RFP. I mean, unless, Eric, you want to come up and say we have people beaten down our door, but last time we had one other person outside of Buddy's.
Yeah, I've heard from one or two other companies, and that was last year when his came to an end.
Okay. So, and I suppose, you know, now that we have the, the new beautiful boat launch, people do want to come, but, yeah, so, just my two cents.
Any other comments from Alderman? Alderman Spiegelberg.
Question maybe for Eric, do we have any other moorings down there that we can potentially rent out at any other time? Like, okay, he's got two, and Golden, whoever, is the place on Okachi?
We only do the one because the others are, we need the pier space for people to load and unload out of there. So we have the, the mooring sections that we do along the shore and along the island, and then we have a couple piers. One is for the boat rentals, and the others are for residents to use.
Okay, okay. I, I think we can potentially do a hybrid of this. I'm not in favor of sending this out for RFP right now in 2026, although, you know, I understand what you're saying. But maybe doing, you know, giving him a five years or seven years, like Alderman Altman-Clothe said, and then coming back and revisiting that with an RFP process.
Alderman Shell Pepper.
I'd just say, I agree with Alderman Mulder in terms of making sure that we go out for an RFP, that we get the best bid on it. Again, that we're accountable to our taxpayers to make sure that we're getting the best deal for them, that's who we're accountable to, that's who we should be trying to service and make sure that they're happy with what we're doing down there. And then also, I would just note, I think it was like a year or two ago, when a gentleman was trying to rent out paddle boards, and this council was unwilling to let him do the paddle boards without going out for an RFP. There was multiple members on this council that were unwilling to do that. So I guess it doesn't quite, you know, match up to me why you would be in favor or against going out for an RFP for the paddle boards that are just on such a minimal scale, but, but you, you wouldn't want to have RFPs for, for the pontoon boats.
Well, I think when you look at things black and white, your comments are accurate. The question is, is there, is there a consideration, because a request was made for somebody that's done something in a true financial and social way, as a truly, as a public benefit to the community? So I think it's a little bit different in that fact, but from a black and white standpoint, yeah, you're 100% correct. Other questions or comments from council?
I've got one.
Oh. Alderman McConnell.
Do you, is there a current lease in place, or is it already expired, or it's out for renewal this year, or is it going through, are we changing the terms right now?
So it goes through, the extension goes through this year, so through the end of this month.
We would need to make.
Yeah.
I, I think a theme we're going to hear, we've heard it in committee, and we're going to hear in future, is transparency, and I think government should be black and white. It reduces the perception that we are favoring one person from the other, one business from the other, kind of regardless of what favors are done for the city. I think that's what we should strive for in government, so I do think we need to establish some ground rules for things like this and abide to them, just like we did with the paddle boards, you know, I don't think scale necessarily matters. I think people want transparency from us, they want to know what to expect, and I think it starts with every decision that we make. So I'm for RFP on this, just for the sake of creating process and making sure we stick to it.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
And John, where did you come up with those payment numbers, and can you assure us that those are fair?
Yes, I mean, so I took it where I was at.
Competitive.
At 7,000. And if you look at pricing that you're getting from your other mooring, your, I'll call it private mooring, much different than what I'm paying for one slip. And if you go to Okachi or you go to wherever it is, you will find that the $3,500 per slip that I'm paying is above the private place. But if, and then I kept taking it up, and I went three, I originally did 5% over three years, but you divide that out, it's 3.34% over two years. And will the inflation meet up with that? Will, I can tell you that if you look at what somebody was paying for a private mooring slip in Oconomowoc five years ago, and what they're going to pay in today, and what they'll pay in five years, I'm sure I'm going to be way far ahead of that, because your rates aren't going up that. aren't going up that fast, but.
So, so could we go out for RFP now? Sure. Could we go out in five years? Sure. But would it guarantee any greater income to us other than what he's offering? And I believe that with what he's wanting to do with the pontoons, it's a collaborative deal with Buddy's, and it further guarantees that he can be successful with the entire project versus always splitting this up into two different things. I mean, I'd be up, again, to do a five-year or a seven-year at some point, but I, I wouldn't go any less than that.
Other comments or questions? Any questions for Eric? Alderman Rosak.
No, I just, just overall getting into the discussion on this, the paddle board, I do remember the paddle boards, that was a brand-new thing that was brought to us without any RFPs and no history. Our comment, we ultimately approved it as it was, and then that comment about the RFPs moving forward, took, that paddle board group then actually went and started working with Sherpers to do the joint, which was the other group that said they were interested. So they actually worked together afterwards. So that was a, a positive conversation. I actually voted and pushed to do RFPs for this many, many years ago. John will remember this, this was ten years ago, twelve, eleven years ago. And since that time, I think you've won every RFP. There were several where there was no competition. Last, three years ago, there was one group that came in. And the RFP process for this is a little different. It's not necessarily the lowest bid. There's also a safety factor, and there's other things that we can consider because it's a service. So I'm kinda with Karen on this. I, I'd be okay doing something short-term for you and then putting it out for an RFP. Fifteen is too long for me. You know, frankly, if you would've put this as part of the contract of the building, I, I probably could've gotten behind it then as, you know, they're combined and together. Now it's kind of this kind of post-build ask, so that I do struggle with that, given my past positions, and I, I wanna be consistent. So I'd be okay with amending this tonight for like two or three years or something, and then going back out for RFP like we have been doing, and then us modifying that, that length at some point to five. You know, that's just kind of in my head, I'm not, I'm not wed to that idea at all. But he's, you know, he's been renting the boats there for a while, there's some consistency with the folks there that, that rent them. So that's kind of, fifteen's long. I, I could, I could live with five tonight, I could live with three or four, and then do an RFP off in the future. I'm, I'm confident you're gonna win because you provide a great service out there, so.
Alderman McConnell.
I like what you said, I could get behind a, I don't know if I'm making a motion that would be processed, but renewing it for three years, allowing it to go RFP, so there is some standard or some process set, and then going off of that. I think we've heard a lot of ideas, so I think it's, we probably need to start honing in on what we wanna propose. So I would be on board for that if.
Alderman Ellis.
I'd like to make a motion to approve First Amendment with the understanding that fourteen years, but five years.
I'll second that.
I'd like to open up for any conversation. Eric Hand was up and I got a motion before I could get to you.
Yeah, no problem. I am, so, a number of things. McConnell, what you said about just making sure that we don't have the wrong, doing RFPs, right? That's, that to me made complete sense. I agree with, I think everybody's agreeing that this is too long, coming back to that, a, a shorter term. You've, you've been doing this, you've been the one winning these, it, it makes sense. We do have, Oconomowoc continues to be more attractive, we've got more going on, I think it's gonna become more popular, driving more of that activity on the lake. I, I would, I would back doing something along, what have we done for, is, what's the term we've done, is it two, three years? What have we done, three years?
It's two and automatic one-year.
So I would back doing something tonight with these numbers on a three-year and then doing an RFP. I think it, I think it's, even five seems a little long, given that I think we're gonna see some more.
Any other comments? We have a motion for five-year extension that's been second. Other comments?
Thedral question.
Yes.
If, if that motion fails, do we get to make another motion?
Yes.
All right. Yes.
So have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Can you restate the motion?
The restate is to extend the, the lease for five more years, and then the plan is for it to go to RFP after that. Did I state that correctly, Kevin?
That is correct.
So it will go out to RFP?
After, after five years.
After five years.
Right.
But I think his, his statement is, does your motion say it has to go to RFP after five years?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying for clarification, so you have it. Yep.
What's the financials on the lease? Is it, what has been proposed?
As, as proposed, yes.
The three and a half percent increase.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
No.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
So a motion pass. So John, congratulations. Mr. Sutner, thank you for what you do for the community, and let's, like, let's keep doing more. Thank you.
Thanks.
It was a great discussion, council, and great debate back and forth. Let's move on to our next item. Consider an act on the Resolution 25-R 3307 for the final boat launch construction cost. This is the whole thing.
So with the boat launch project, I'm here tonight to ask for an additional $51,178. You should have a handout that has the correct information on for the cover memo, the resolution is correct. So for the boat launch project, we had worked with Yankee, the contract, final estimate was $2,520,278. The approved funding, including contingency, was $2,610,274. So after our Yankee contract was complete, we're left with a balance of $89,996. There were additional project costs of $141,174, and that's why we have the funding gap of $51,178. To kind of explain some of those additional project costs, the biggest one was the kiosk. So that kiosk system was about $57,000. There were some additional cameras added to that. Then on top of that, we had work with, you know, the additional cameras, and then all the elements that go into a project like this. So signage, additional costs of, you know, mailings, everything that we did to get people off the lake, all of those things, all those tangibles, those all added up. So that was about $22,000 of those things all added up. So that's where that brings us to the $51,178. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Alderman Shellpepper.
I just think on the process side, doing as much as we can on the front end to identify these costs and understand what we're gonna be dealing with as opposed to on the back end. I know that some of those things that we can't do, but I think we could've envisioned the signs, you know, I think we could envision the kiosks. Those were all pieces that we likely knew were gonna be a part of it, and making sure that we're covering that on the front end. So again, we're being accountable, we're being transparent, instead of trying to put it all together at the end. But these are costs that we've already been obligated to, that we are contracted to fulfill, not that we're doing as a favor. So that's why we're paying them. Thank you.
Good comments. Alderman McConnell.
I'm gonna echo what Alderman Shellpepper said. I would be remiss if I didn't, I'm gonna use the word chastise, that's probably a little aggressive, the city just as much as I did the, you know, the Buddy's Beach Bungalow issue, just because we do have things that probably should've been done on the front end. So just wanna go on record saying I am frustrated by the, the cost is a theme that we see quite a bit by our, with a lot of our projects, but, you know, I understand it's something we have to do now.
Like to entertain a motion, please.
No move.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Next up are our Plan Commission items. First up is the amended sections for the ordinance. I do wanna mention to council, this is the first reading, it's not in your agenda, but if you make a motion, you do have the option to waive the second reading. Consider act on ordinance 25-O 1107, amending section 17.105, 17.106, 17.202, 17.305, 17.504, and 17.608, within the zoning ordinance created by the urban park zoning districts, uses, setbacks, driveway width, landscape, and signage requirements. Comments, Mr. Gallow.
Thank you, Mayor. Right, I was gonna repeat that this is, requires two readings, so this is the first reading. You may waive the second reading if you wish. I also wanted to mention that I received a letter of support for the creation of the UP zoning district, as well as the rezoning. They combined it into one letter. I made copies and put them at your stations. That came in this, this afternoon. So I put it out, and I, that was from the, the board of the Fowler Lake Village, who has interest in this topic. And finally, if, if you noticed, I did state the setbacks were zero, and I took a little bit of a liberty at a zero for the shoreline as well. We don't have a zero setback from shoreline in any other district, but being that this is a city-owned property, you know, it's something that, that we did grant a zero shoreline setback for the Rockwell project. I don't think we're gonna ever need to go that close, but let's give ourselves as much flexibility as we want. I was just grasping at that. If you wanted to make it a 10-foot or a 15-foot setback or something, I'd be happy to do that, but otherwise, I just want you to know that we're full transparency, we're not hiding anything, there's a, a zero-foot setback in this district. And then the last thing is if you make a motion, you may wanna take under consideration that what the Plan Commission did ask, and they said change the word intended to reserved exclusively, or if you have different language that you feel is more appropriate, we could change it as well. Those are my comments, thank you.
I'd like to open up to council, any questions or comments? Alderman Rosak.
I think that's a good change, but my one question is, why are we doing this now and why weren't we doing this before the last time we tried to approve Village Green? Why is this coming in now? What, what prompted this, I guess? I mean, I think it's a good change, it's just, we've tried to vote on a Village Green project two months ago, and this wasn't a thing then, now it's a thing, is it?
We've, we've talked about it for months, actually.
Oh, you guys have staff.
All we're trying to do is clean up the zoning, which makes no sense. So it's been talked about, but then we, there was an approach that was brought to the Plan Commission, and we didn't like it. And so we tabled that and said, no, we sent it back to staff to come up with something that we thought was best for the community.
Good.
But that's, so there were delays in that process, I think that's, unless you have other comments, Jason?
Well, no, these, these things do take time. The, the rezoning, we were going to change it to MC, which required a land use plan amendment, that takes a 30-day notice. I mean, we've been working on this, that went to the Plan Commission a couple months ago, so we've been working on this for, for probably about four or five months.
Too long, too long, but a good result, did a great job, yes.
Truly answering your question, Alderman Rosak, we were discussing this when we were going through the process for the plan that we brought that was turned down.
Okay.
We knew that we had to do it, then once that was turned down and we started moving forward again, we then started the process without waiting for the next project.
And for. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarity. Yeah. Alderman Shellpepper.
Why is the institutional zoning not sufficient? I mean, because, and I elaborate on that to say all of our parks are under that zoning right now, correct, in the city?
Yeah, that's correct. All of our parks aren't downtown. We, the downtown zoning has zero setbacks from a side lot line. Institutional public has a, it's not institutional park, it's institutional public. That has a 20-foot side yard setback. So I remember, you know, when we were talking about potentially putting bathrooms next to the, et cetera, they said, oh, it projects out too far. Well, now it would have to be 20 feet out off of the building, that's where it would start. So it would be literally towards the middle of the Village Green. So that would not work under the current zoning.
Why is a variance not sufficient to handle that?
Well, variance, you have to show a lot, there's a three-part test, and, you know, that's, you know, is there a burden on, on the city without it being there? Is it a hardship? You're putting it into hands of a different committee, the zoning board of appeals, I don't know what, what they would think. This takes away that need for a hardship or burden.
So we won't be using this zoning anywhere else in the city? This would be the exclusive place for it? And that's based strictly on wanting to be able to build this potential restroom we're talking about?
Not necessarily. I addressed that a little bit earlier, I said, is this gonna be a spot zoning, just one area in the whole city? Maybe not. There's other, I looked at several places where this could, could work. You know, where we put the Christmas tree by the roundabout, that's city-owned, that could be a park. You know, by the auto parts store on East Wisconsin Avenue where the gateway sign is, that's owned by the city, that could be a park. This little pocket area right next to City Hall here, that could be a, a park. So there's, there's places throughout, you know, Veterans Park, you know, Rockwell Park, you know, there's, there's places that we could make this if we wanted to.
It makes sense, I mean, when we, we have this kind of discussion on its face, but I, I guess I would just, you know, go off of what Alderman Rosak had said. I mean, we've talked about this location, I mean, for years, even with the, the rubble pile to the north, the rock pile to the north, Rockwell Rock Pile. Yeah. So how come that was never, you know, it was never even broached at that point?
Well, we've never had a, a defined site plan on where to, where to put this. It's never come to the Plan Commission or anything else for, for review. You know, this is something that, you know, we're trying to clean up, there's multiple zonings, multiple lot lines out there, this is something almost like more of a housekeeping item, but in order to create a zero setback, we thought it would be best to create a district.
Thanks. Alderman McConnell.
So there's, this is definitely a hot topic right now, so I do have a question. If it were to remain the, the commercial use, the two spots, I think, could the city technically sell that as it is zoned right now and have it developed?
Okay, you're getting into, so.
We have, we have two, I'll get, I promise I'm gonna make a point on this. Right now it's mixed-use commercial, right? Technically, that could be sold and developed into a small building as it's zoned currently, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So it would make sense for us to, if we really wanna protect the Village Green, to change it to a park-type zone?
Correct.
Correct. I'm just being very emphatically clear for anybody that is listening or interested.
Okay, I, no further questions? Oh, Alderman Spiegelberg.
Can you go back to those, the slides that you just had on there? The green, yeah, there. So the green area does not include all of the boardwalk. What is that, what's the blue area, institutional public? Isn't the boardwalk split in two then, like part's gonna be in the new zoning and part's still gonna be in institutional public?
Right, the zoning district doesn't have to be consistent, it's just what uses are allowed.
And, and we do allow those types of structures in institutional public.
Okay.
But I think that's an interesting point, why not just include that next?
Could we?
Well, you have a big parking lot there, or you're just saying just do the strip along the? We're, we're trying to simplify things, not complicate them.
Well, I'm trying to do the opposite.
That's okay. It's okay if that's what you wanna do.
Mission accomplished.
That was cute.[1698.65] That was cute. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Rozak, so moved.
Second, Ellis.
Did you want to change the language to reserved exclusively from intended?
Oh, I thought that's what, isn't that the way it reads right now?
No, it says intended, and you didn't waive second.
Oh, geez. Well, yeah. I'll amend my motion to waive the second reading and add, swap out intended for publicly-owned land to reserved exclusively for publicly-owned land. I misread it. I thought they had made the change. So thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Okay, now that we've changed the ordinance to have a different zoning district, which is now law, now we have another ordinance, which also has the option for first and/or waiving of the second reading. Consider act on ordinance 25-01103 to rezone 1.45 acres of land from IP institutional parking and mixed-use commercial to urban park UP district located at 105, 109, 111, and 121 North Main Street and 104 East Wisconsin Avenue. So now, quick summary?
Again, this is the first reading, and we can waive it now that we created that zoning district. This is for the five parcels. It's important to note that it's lots 16 through 20, it would be being rezoned.
Like to entertain a motion, please?
Second.
Any further questions or comments?
Is there a second reading on this one?
Waive second reading.
Waive the second reading. Do I have a second? And stay the second. Good catch. Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
On to the next item, the final one on this group, is consider act on the certified survey map to combine the properties in the Village Green located at 104 East Wisconsin Avenue and 105 through 111 North Main Street. Like to entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? This is not an ordinance, it's just a certified survey map. Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to note that we are not including lots 16. This is a CSM that combines only four lots. You can see the chart here to combine 17, 18, 19, and 20. So this is not the 1.45 acres. This is a slightly less. Lot 16 is the current driveway end right now and for potential access. We don't know the outcome of that. That can be a standalone parcel. It meets all the underlying district requirements of the UP zoning, but as a standalone parcel, but we are not doing that. We don't know the future of that lot.
Thank you for the clarity.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Well done, everybody. Now some fun stuff. And thank you for those that have been waiting for this. We're going to have a discussion of the Village Green improvements with a request for the direction from the council as to what you would like to do moving forward. So, Mr. Herzog, if you can just give a little history of where we were, why we're here, and show everybody what we, what you guys have put together.
All right. Well, thank you again for listening to this and laying the groundwork tonight for the project just down the road on our Village Green. As we've spent a considerable amount of time getting to just this point in your packet, you can kind of follow some of the timelines, just to kind of track where we're at, where we're going with this. So we got a couple of things tonight. I wanted to bring everybody back up to speed of basically where we left this project from earlier this spring and through the summer, as we are considering the park itself for a full improvement and the discussion of restrooms, public restrooms even being included in the project altogether, where they might want to be, and how to complete that idea. So just to familiarize everybody with the project and the plan, we have not altered the park so much, other than removing the structure that was originally proposed on the north end. The project right now is just set up to replace the parking lot as is. On-street parking, we would propose a bump in here for protection of the parking and relay out the park as you see. On the far side, on the east side here, I'm going to refer to this as the et cetera building, understanding these are, these are group-owned and tenants just being used in there, but for tonight's reference, we can utilize the terminology for the et cetera building. This block right here is the last time you guys had kind of seen this project, as I described the possibility of installing smaller, more narrow bathroom setup along the et cetera building inside of the flower garden area. Seemed to be some consensus there. In the meantime, we were approached by the owners of the buildings in this area. In fact, they're here tonight. They also have engaged an architect, Oliver and Architects. They are with us tonight and would like to walk you through some of their ideas for engaging some of the work in this park that could ultimately be some type of partnership as well. So I'm going to quickly go through this, and you guys can ask questions here, just to reorientate this. This is, I'm attempting just to bring in some of their plans. Again, here's the same park, the original idea we had talked about. Their area focus is going to be on the corner of the existing building. If everybody can recall, the staircase that's out in place right now, that's per easement, that they have those, that staircase, the dumpster is behind that. So in this L-shaped area, that's where we'll be discussing tonight. And in fact, we will even be discussing a little bit alongside their building. So here is the aerial rough look at, just to kind of see where our curbing, how far extends out. That's roughly 17 feet away from their building. And the staircase is tight against this area. So at this time, I'm going to allow Bud to come up. He is a representative and partner in Oliver Architects. He's going to help describe some of the work that they've done on behalf of the owners there and kind of give your eyes a moment to adjust to some of the differences here, as he'll describe some of this work. And then I'll come back up, and we can discuss some of the direction to go forward.
Thanks, Jason. Good evening, everyone. I'm Bud Bessler with Oliver Construction, 1770 Executive Drive in Condamack. I'm also here with Keith Farley from Oliver Construction, and also representing the owners of the et cetera building, Jerry Urdman and Jason DeVorque, in case you have additional questions or concerns. As Jason mentioned, we're kind of focusing on this, on this corner as opposed to what's been previously presented. Basically, it solves a lot of issues. As you mentioned, the dumpster is existing there. There's an open wood stair there. The stair has to be there for exiting off the existing roof. So we incorporate that as part of the addition. Addition is just under 1,000 square feet. And as Jason pointed out, it doesn't go past the existing enclosure, dumpster enclosure extent, and/or the existing curb that's there. So this is kind of a sketch, and keep it in mind, this is conceptual. We're just looking for mainly direction as we work through this project. But there's opportunities to open the et cetera building to possibly a cafe, some service through windows, and even off the bar area to make this city-green kind of a vital public space. So with that, this is the proposed location. And I think I can operate this. There's a blow-up of the, of the plan itself, and roughly only 16 feet of a projection from the existing building on both sides. And it's kind of like a balanced symmetry here. What I did here is actually cut away the corner. There will be a support here, but basically, by cutting away the corner, you kind of maintain that connection and view to the lake as much as possible. And then it also creates a kind of a private area for parents to wait for children, and they could come back to. The actual blow-up of the building of the bathrooms allow us to have three fixtures for men's and two labs, four fixtures for women's and two labs. And then you see how the stairs is now enclosed and leads to the existing roof deck. The bonus space that's left over is a utility space that would be pretty much owned by the city, where basically utilities could be connected through that utility space, electrical, plumbing, HVAC. So we're utilizing the whole spade, space adjacent to the et cetera building. The reason I went out this far for the, for the women, not only just to give you more stalls, but it was also, there's an existing door that leads into the restaurant, and this allows for security and not just an open stair to the roof deck and everything else. And the security for the restaurant can be used back and forth, and it leads up to the roof. So it kind of does double duty. So I had to bring the wall to that to accomplish that. The bonus the et cetera owners get is that, some additional roof deck area. You see the stairs again, it's fully enclosed, and you come out and you can basically see additional space for additional tables, or just viewing from the lake at that higher level while maintaining that. I also showed on the, on the plan is that, and you'll see in the elevations, that these walls for the stair do not block the view. They're, it's all glass, except for the corner support columns. So you'll see that shortly. We brought some elements in the elevation that mainly, here's one from the lake, basically, I tried to balance the architecture with the existing building beyond. And so the height and this pergola at the top, which is basically steel material, sitting on brick columns, and has the Condamack O for representation, and that, it creates a balance. So you can see it most with this elevation from the west. The existing building is actually a nice building. The actual architecture is two-part. So we have a facade renovation, which were basically consists of cleaning up the existing brick, providing the cornice trim, not unlike the building across the street on Main, and carrying that through as elements. So you create a traditional component and kind of more of urban, urban architecture that fits within this downtown area. And then the rest of the facade that's there now is just strictly masonry. And what we intend to do is cover that with a metal cladding system, typically called longboard, which is economical, but can go over surfaces and clad metal siding and be maintenance-free. And you can do a lot with it. We've got some glass overhead doors coming down from where the existing window heads were. So it's an economical way to open the inside to the outside and vice versa. I'm highlighting a couple of areas where the existing door is now, could possibly be a window, or even just a doorway to the, to the bar area. This I would think would be a food service handout window, where basically the public can actually come out and, similar to what Mullins is now, where actually you create an open space to the building. Then we added some audience. So that's, that first part is basically the facade renovation. And then the second part is the restroom addition. So you can see the balance that I've tried to step and create from a height standpoint, and create some kind of intermingling of the materials at the back and the front. So it kind of blends in. And then the overall brick relationship. The 3D drawing is basically, so this is the siding that I talked about. You can barely see the lines, but Condamack O, the elements, it all kind of ties in just, just by putting the additional brick where it should be. And basically carry and still see the lake. So we're not blocking too much. As we work down, there's an opportunity, like I said, for a cafe. There's different things that we could, we can interject, as this is a concept review. And there's a lot of things we discussed, but we narrowed it down to basically this base concept, because the biggest portion of this is, is the location of this restroom, and how we're handling the facade. There you see it again, the elevation and the balance, and creating an element, as we've heard in several meetings, is that this elevation gets seen almost every night on the weather report on TV. So we wanted to dial this up for Condamack. And even from the north, you still get that, and if you count all Os, there's going to be five Os. But you can do things to the facade. It's a smaller building, so you don't want to do too much architecturally to get, make it more look complex or busy. But there's opportunities to do something like a city map, historical photos, signage to both elevations. That's the last one. We're looking for direction, directions to, how we should proceed from here on out.
Yeah, I think, let's open it up, council, to comments and questions. You have both Jason and Bud, and we also have.
Just any questions for Bud?
For Keith or Jerry?
Yeah.
Jason?
Or any of them?
Yeah.
So go back to that last picture. I think the plans look actually really good. Yeah, just, or one of the main ones. Is that, is that brick? Or is that that stuff you were talking about?
That's the brick.
That's the brick, okay. And the softer color side, that's the kind of, I don't know what they call that now. Yeah, it's like a sideways.
You're kind of combining the residential feel, which makes it a little more human-scale, and then also with the urban.
Gotcha. Okay, that makes sense.
Could you go up three slides to the first colored slide? There, you're kind of getting the perspective of the bump out, how far it's going to come. That's 16 feet, you said.
Right. Yeah, if you can recall the curbing.
Jennifer, Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was starting.
Oh, I'm sorry, just saw Jennifer first.
No, that's okay. I wasn't looking over here.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Oh, that's right. There's people over here.
Can you go to the slide that shows the, like, outdoor café area? I think it was the, right above the colored one. Oh, maybe it wasn't that one. I thought there's one that actually shows, like, kind of tables and chairs. I just would like more information on what the city's thoughts are on that. I mean, are we in discussion? Right there, that one. Is there discussion with somebody that would potentially take that? Is that removable for events? I'll be honest, I'm not very, this is the one element of this project that I'm not for. I don't think we should be giving away any part of our Village Green for, to another business like this. You know, there's been other, you know, you guys can beat me up for some past things, you know, when it came to, you know, the 18 inches on the other side, whatever. But this just, I don't know. I would like more information on that.
Yep. So just to be clear, this is the garden area that we have a single bench to. That's, you know, we don't use it to have any other use right now. It has a long downspout. I think one of the other things that I've liked to see, it really isn't mentioned here, but we had discussed a lot of the mechanicals that are on the side of the building. They've been open to the idea of moving them to the rooftop. We know that this is the mechanical area right now that's being proposed to be enclosed and to be covered up. So there's a lot of, you know, nice pieces in here, just on the elevation on the proposal right now. So, yep, anybody want to respond or talk more about that seating area? I'm fine with trying to understand that. That was someone my question, on how much and where do we want to focus?
I mean, are there any businesses that are, there's been discussion that they kind of think that if this happens, they are going to get that?
Well, I think of, like, our next-door layout and park.
I mean, it'd be nice to see some sort of seating there. That would be great.
The business there, they're not allowed to straight-up serve right there. They are able to use it. I feel like it's something similar to that. Waylands has a, you know, an open concept on the backside right there. We have an easement with the ramp and stuff. Those are just simple things to compare.
Eric?
Just comments, maybe a question or two in there. First of all, it looks, just based on the rendition, it looks beautiful, right? It's, when you're looking toward that side of the building, and it's, to me, it addresses the bathrooms not being in some ugly place. It looks really nice. Now, the problem we all know, this topic has come up, right? The public-private, right? Where does ownerships, I mean, obviously, that'll be clearly defined. I'm assuming the city owns the structure where the bathrooms are.
Correct.
Right?
This is a slightly different one. This is almost an inverted version of the partnership, because it is a public restroom.
Right.
And solely a public restroom, so the city would orchestrate the construction of that.
And my understanding is, and then obviously, the benefit, and we're, I'm not going to get into the financials yet. I'm sure we'll get into that. But the... But the, the location, the restaurant, they benefit, right? The improved space, space up on top, right? Looking, I'm assuming that that's going to be patron-only space for the, for the restaurant, whoever has that space, right? That's not-
That's my understanding.
And then this did come up when we were talking a little bit about this before. My, my assumption also is that patrons from that restaurant, you know, are they going to be, if they're up there, are they going to be using those restrooms and on a busy, you know, hot Saturday? Does it kind of defeat the purpose of having that? But I don't think so. I think the answer is they'll have their own bathrooms up there. So maybe that can be answered another time, but.
They have expressed interest in remodeling the interior as well. That would help accommodate some of their flow and bathroom use. So might be their opportunity, not sure.
And again, maybe more conversation about the outside.
Let's, let's have the applicant maybe speak to that, where it's right on the forefront.
Good evening. Jason DeVorek. Owner of building, the Et Cetera building. What's that?
Isn't that why you have Bud here? Bud, can you hold the microphone?
Jason DeVorek, owner of the Et Cetera building with Jerry Erdman, my partner back there. So to the seating outside, we actually do this behind the maze building or the fray building. There's seating out there when we relocated the dumpster corrals. That's actually part our property and part city that we lease from the city. And it's all available unless Bree, who has the interior design space, decides to do an event and puts little table tents that says private event. So we're open to that being open to the public. You know, Jason, the owner of the Et Cetera is here as well. I'm sure he can, you know, speak to it as well. I'm sure he'd want it to be private all the time. But I think with the seating wall, that was discussed, maybe some public seating on the other side of that seating wall in addition, just to create more gathering places. That's the point.
Thank you. Did that answer your questions, Eric and Jennifer? Okay. Alderman Mulder?
Yeah, a couple iterations ago, we'd, we'd had that out there as well. And I kind of bristled at it as well, having that, you know, public space, kind of a private dining area for the Et Cetera. But then when I think about, we encourage all of the restaurants to have sidewalk seating in, which are always full, right? We, we do, we do a lot to accommodate boats to come up to our, you know, we pay for trans and docks, so boats can come up and eat at our restaurants. Like, so in the end, it didn't feel like that big of a leap because it's, well, first of all, it's just a planter. So we're exchanging a planter for some tables. And it will be really popular. So yes, the restaurant will benefit from it, but they're making the investment with us here. And this is kind of one of the paybacks, I guess, for them. So, you know, it does, it, it does concern me a little bit, but I think that we're already doing it in so many other places, trying to encourage successful businesses by giving them little perks and opportunities for people to enjoy them that it kind of fits within that for me.
Other questions or comments? Alderman Spiegelberg?
So I know that Sarah Ninman is here, and I would love to hear her take on this. If I can put you on the spot, Sarah, as far as how this space and this rendering can accommodate-
I'm sorry, Sarah, you cannot come up.
Can accommodate some of the chamber events.
Sorry, Sarah, I haven't been asked yet for permission to bring you up yet?
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. May I?
Sure. Welcome, Sarah.
Father, may I?
No, we just have to be careful because we just-
Thank you.
It becomes a free fall.
No, thank you for that.
But this is a great, was a great thing because it's a discussion item and it's very appropriate.
Yeah.
So Sarah had not seen these either, and she and I had talked about them for a while. We wanted to get her initial impact and then, you know, see if she has any other ideas.
Yeah, I think it's great. So Sarah Ninman, I'm on staff at the Chamber. I own businesses downtown and I live in Oconamuck. So this is great. I think this is the first time that I saw it. I've had lengthy conversations with Jason earlier today. Again, I think, I think having people engage in our businesses and in our downtown is a positive. I don't think that's ever a negative. I think these partnerships have been great. I think that any restroom is what I'm here to express that we need. I don't think that's changed in the last eight years that I've come up here. If we do need more testimony as to why we need restrooms, I could stand up here for a really long time, especially being on the Chamber, on the Wisconsin Avenue with the Chamber. I've even seen it more and more as to the people coming to visit our town, the amount of people that come not just to one business here, but to come to all of the businesses. They often, often, I mean, I don't want to be dramatic about it, but I would say on an average, probably five to 10 people weekly come into our office to use the restroom right now. Being in the Avenue Square Mall, I own a business in there as well, that is viewed as a public restroom right now. And of course, you guys have heard from the Roots Girls and, and how much that is utilized. So I think the placement of this is great. I think the size of it looks like it would be very doable. And again, we don't use this primarily for events, so I'm strictly talking about the day-to-day business of this. For Fall Fest, it was $2,300 to bring in restrooms. So it's, if you bring in six to eight porta-potties on average, it's about $1,200 a day. And then cleaning services, just to reference what it would be to bring in porta-potties continuously. So I love the project. I think it's great. I hope you guys vote yes on restrooms. I think that would be a fantastic thing for our businesses and a partnership with people that have been a part of our community for a long time that are also choosing to reinvest.
And to also be fair to, to everybody else here in the audience, Sarah came up as a representative of the Chamber, but we typically have the developers or the people who have the projects come up. So if there's any one of you that would like to make a comment on what you've seen, you have free rein right now. If you do, don't talk for five minutes. I'll give you about a minute.
Thank you, Sarah.
Please be short and concise, but you've made, you've made the effort to come out tonight, and you've heard the different perspectives so far.
Yeah.
As a constituent, I'd like to hear your view.
My view is, I think it all looks really lovely. I don't know anything about the finances, so it's hard to make a decision not knowing that or how a deal is maybe put together.
And we don't know either, so we're on the same-
Microphone.
My biggest concern is, is that I don't know where they put their garbage then, because I think their garbage used to be back there. I'm sure there's an answer to that.
Yep.
The other thing is, is when we had the, and I'm looking at how it's up there on the screen, but when we had the Fall Fest, which I thought was a great success, I loved the dynamic of having these things down the front of the street during the day and then in the back. And I love the way it spilled over to the back in that lot.
Yep.
And one thing is, is it gets very narrow there. And so I would just, I would just really look at how narrow it becomes. I don't need, I don't know if they need, because there is access from the other side, do they still need to have access and an easement to get through in a case of emergency from the other side? That I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's going to be actually even more room.
But it gets very, it gets very stiff there. And it's the same thing, I hate to say this, and I'm sorry, because I think it looks nice, but I think that it's the same thing as with Buddy's and the ban shell. It's like, whoa, waist small, cramped. So I don't know how that would be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd like to come up, come on up. Please try to limit to like a minute or so. I'm just, I just want to make sure, and I really appreciate all the other folks coming out.
Marilyn Olson, I live in the city. I was on one of the original Village Green committees. I've seen various iterations of restrooms. I think this is a fantastic plan. I think this looks great. I think they look like they fit in rather than plopped against the side of the building or plopped on, excuse me, on the north end of the property. I think this fits that corner beautifully. I think it would be a tremendous asset to the city.
Right.
I also want to say that I walked over here from Draper Hall, and I'm coming through the parking lot where the boardwalk is, and there's a little five or six-year-old, mommy, 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 I have to go to the bathroom. I really have to go to the bathroom. And she said, well, there aren't any down here. You're just going to have to hold it.
Thank you. Any last comments from anybody in the audience? Jason?
That's enough.
No.
No.
No. Jason?
Jason Schultz, 1379 Crystal Lake Drive, owner of the restaurant part, not the building. But I did see the drawing a couple of weeks ago. We talked about it. I'm just going to share a little bit with you, right? Fall Fest, I go through $100 worth of toilet paper just on that day, which is normal, which is a lot more. I've spent $20,000 replacing the sewer system in our building. Everybody comes in and uses it. Not everybody spends money when they do come in. So bathrooms in this location, I'm all for. There's porta-potties out there for Fall Fest. Women do not use them. They will come in and use ours. So forget the porta-potties, let's look at bathrooms. I really like where these are. We're working on, you know, dumpster corral or something like that. We can figure that out. But it doesn't block our, our current windows when people are inside. It doesn't make the building darker inside. You know, in the back, we have a golf simulator, which I already blacked out those two back windows where, where the one bathroom would be. There is a emergency exit door right there, which will continue to be there on both sides. So it doesn't affect, you know, our business as much. The biggest thing is, you know, you talked about the seating on the outside. People already come in, order food, and sit at picnic table in the green space. You know, that's not going to change. The only difference is going to be they may be a little closer to our building. They go and sit on the boardwalk. They order from us, they order from Mullins. They order from Sobies. I see them, you know, their to-go containers are, are very distinct, you know, different from ours, so I can tell it's not our food. And I'm there all the time, and, and we have nice windows that you can see right out of, you know, where people like to come in and people watch. So I, I don't see a negative, you know, or, oh, we're going to get a whole bunch more business. I don't think that's really what it is. It's more for the people down there. The little girl has to go to the bathroom. You know, I tell people, if I hear that, I, I tell them to go and use the bathroom. I've never told anybody, you have to buy something in order to use our bathrooms. I've always had it open to the public, even though I don't have a sign out there that says open to the public. I've never told anybody they couldn't use them. So I understand, my wife doesn't like using porta-potties. I'm fine with it, just don't touch anything. But, but it definitely helps. All right? But thank you, guys.
You bet. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. I think council, I'm going to send it back to Jason for some other comments. And then kind of a request as to what you'd like us to do. I can state that these images have been sent to the Oconamuck Enterprise. They'll be in Thursday's newspaper because we want the public to be aware. And we, they'll also be most likely on social media a little bit before that as well. Jason?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to wrap this up to kind of pull together some of the general thoughts tonight, as I'm not looking for definitive pieces, but I would like to hear how you would like the city to move forward with getting this, this in place. If we have consensus on amongst this group, is it worth taking a vote, Mayor? Or just to understand- That's really, that's kind of a- A couple of different things on how we want to proceed because-
The next, the next step you guys would be to go out for an RFP based on what you see today. Because, you know, to the point we don't know how-
Well, there's, there's a step before that, though, that I'm worried about.
Which one?
Is the engineering.
Oh, okay.
Is I want to know, and I want to be clear so that we have a successful project. So I want to understand from everybody here where and what to focus on or not to focus on. I.e., we removed the, the structure up here from our last plan and didn't change anything. We just made that flat space. Do you want any other areas of focus to be alternatives? Do you need more suggestions? Do you need more options? Is this something to move forward with as you see it right now?
Alderman Ellis?
I think this is fantastic. I think you've done, done a great job, and especially those that have spent the time doing this. I'm one that learns from my past. In the past, I've said, yeah, let's go ahead, let's do it, let's get it. And then you come back with an RFP, and I go, wait, what?
Right.
So I'm going to be a little reserved on this. I need to see some numbers before I make any type of a decision on anything.
That's fair, fair enough. I think I would structure it so that we have some alternatives, understanding that if a project is at a base amount and that exceeds what everybody's comfortable with moving forward, then it becomes, okay, what should we eliminate from the project? Which, which amenities are worth sacrificing to meet that financial goal? And is it worth it to the council? That's how I would structure it.
And the way that's kind of designed is in his RFP when that goes out, to get those numbers that you're looking for, Kevin? I think the question is, as council, you have the option to say, hey, I just want to slow down a little bit, give this a little more time, talk to my residents or do something. Or I feel comfortable, and I'd like to direct Jason to go out and finish the engineering and put it out for an RFP so we know what, what it would cost. And so the biggest, most of the engineering's done because most of that's done from the first phase.
Yeah, here's the hard part is, you know, working with the, the group that we don't control just yet. I mean, so we have to work the details out on something like that. If that's truly what you want, like what you saw tonight, is that worth moving forward with? So I wrote a couple other things, you know, the park improvements, the parking lot area. I've got it proposed back in there just to be replaced. Does anybody have objections with that? We were proposing removing it before.
So what are we going, we're going to go through each one numerically here?
Those are just the big one. Or however you see.
He's looking for feedback on individual pieces.
I have just broader feedback I'd like to give before we just start going to each one.
Sure.
I mean, sure, that's fine. Go ahead.
So I, I just, I'm really concerned that there's been very minimal engagement from the public overall on the concept we're putting forward right now. The last concept that we tried to pass that was largely endorsed by most of this council was, was then voted down by the same council that supported a lot of the concepts in it. And I think that was based on the lack of, of feedback and engagement that we received from the public to get to the point where we were at. The same thing I see as being true here. And I'll just be honest, I appreciate Jerry and Jason wanting to be good partners with the city, wanting to engage and putting forward what I've yet seen as being the best, you know, concept to accommodate an external restroom on the green. But I just got to say, based on my lived experience, Kevin, with the concession stand and how that has impacted the views of our, of our lake, how that has impacted the ban shell, I am just like super really hesitant and opposed of putting any sort of additional structures on the green. I, I'm just, I don't think I can do that. I want to see the restroom inside another building that's adjacent to the green, that's near the green. That can't happen right now. But you know what? We've been operating with this current system for quite a while. We've made it work, and I'm fine with continuing to operate off of that system until we have a comprehensive, broader plan for what's happening down here. Because the rock pile is going to remain. That's all still happening. That, that doesn't change at all based on this.
When you say a broader comprehensive plan, you want to wait for-
There's going to be other opportunities to have a restroom, to have a restroom-
Can I interrupt you?
With a TIF. Can I continue to speak, Mayor?
No.
There's going to be an opportunity to have restrooms, whether it's at the rock pile and through some sort of agreement there, whether it's from the Rosati's building, you cross the street through some sort of sale. There's going to be other opportunities for public-private partnerships for a restroom inside of another building.
So I would-
And that's what I, I think we need to see happen there.
I think we all would agree, we'd much rather have it inside a building. So if I'm, I'm just trying to clarify what I think I'm hearing, Chaz. You do not want the restroom in this location on the exterior of a building, and you'd rather address a restroom in the future with the potential future development at some point in time.
Right. And I'd also like to see more feedback and public engagement sessions about whatever sort of design we envision going forward with. Because, and that was one of the first concepts and feedback I gave when we even embarked on this, is like, what are, what are our priorities for seeing down at the green? What are the community's priorities? Those decisions were made internally. We talked about that. I'm never really sure what those priorities were and how you came to those conclusions. But I mean, the process has been lacking. And that's where I'm at.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
So speaking of the process, let's go back to what we had before and when we had those public meetings at the community center.[1743.96] I think you did a really great job of getting the information out there to people, as far as that these were going on. But I felt like they were not very well attended. Can you speak to that?
So, we held two public information meetings last spring and summer. That, at the community center, we provided renderings of a lot of different options and got feedback. The first one was attended fairly well, is one of the better ones that I've been to for a public information meeting, the second one was not. In turn from that, we posted an online option for people just to provide straight feedback, and that was actually really valuable. We got, it was better than a social media post in the fact that we got honest feedback for where people landed, based off of a few questions. And I would highly recommend stuff like that. I'm willing to, you know, entertain any other type of public information, understand a period of time that people are comfortable with, with sharing this type of information's key. And then, understanding what kind of financial restraints we might have to meet all of that together.
I'd be curious to know if anybody else would be up for.
Alderman, Rozak?
Doing the.
Oh, she can go, can all finish.
Oh, no, I wasn't done.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
No. I'd be curious to, knowing what everyone else thinks about potentially having that public input again. You know, there's a couple of things with that, you can get that public input. But then, for the people that don't show up, I feel like they're trusting in us. You know, they've elected us to be in these roles and to represent them. And I think when they don't show up, or they don't wanna give input, they're trusting in us to make a good decision for the city. But I'm curious as to what some other thoughts are on that.
Alderman, Rozak?
Yeah, a lot of good comments, guys. I, I agree with you, Karen. You know, we're not really a democracy, we're representative, Republican, that even comes down to the municipal level. You don't hear from, like, I think we have each in our district 5,000 constituents. I might hear from 10 about this project. So, right, they elect you every two years to try to make those tough decisions, and then, you know, you, you've gotta judge based on that. Social media's not always positive, but I also agree completely with Chaz. I, I think there's gotta be more public engagement this time around. Whether that's just via the, the listening sessions, but also maybe just continued debate here. You know, bring it back in two weeks or four weeks for us to look at it again. We provide additional feedback. I like the plans. I, I always liked the original floor plan. What I think we lost, our, our struggle on last time was the bathroom structure got big, got expensive, and then there was significant cost overruns. We were told at the beginning of that process, this was 3.3 to 3.5, and ended up being, what, 4.3 or 4, whatever it was. We need to borrow almost a million bucks. So, that's where I think we, we struggled. And I think reducing the size of that bathroom and working with a, you know, a private partner may help us there. So, I, I'm, I'm in favor of the plan. I like what I'm looking at right now. I do think bathrooms are needed down there. I just think we need to engage the public and really listen to folks. And whether that's through engagement, I, I know Eric and I actually talked about this, this, just this morning, is doing listening sessions in our, you know, trying to get people in, in our area to come to Starbucks or whatever. I'm not gonna buy everyone coffee. But show up, you know, wherever we can meet and get the word out. And even if it's 20 people, or, or 30 people in our own district that could give us feedback, I think would be helpful. So, I'd, I'd love to see it come back to council in, in four weeks, so two more meetings. I know that maybe seems far out, but I think it's better for a robust debate to give us a chance to get out there and really engage with people. And look, watch Facebook, you're gonna get a lot of people that say, this is the worst idea ever, I hate it. You're not gonna make everyone happy. So, we, we can't be, we can't be focused on, you know, four or five people that don't live in the city that don't like the project. But really, trying to reach out to our neighbors and giving us a chance to do that. To me, that's, so I'm not gonna vote to have this RFP tonight. And I don't really wanna go line by line over everything tonight. I think we need to get what's proposed out.
I just wanted to know if you wanted me to advance anything?
Yeah. I, I don't wanna advance. I'm not in favor of voting on anything that we've literally seen the final drawings two night on. So, I think we need to get it out to the public. We need to meet with people. Everyone should go to their districts, do whatever they want, walk around, talk to people, show up at an HOA meeting and see, you know, what kinda direction we get. So, that's what I'm for.
We already set up a tentative date for a first meeting with the public. But what you guys talk about is a process, and I think the process, the way Jason did it last night, with, last time, was very good. Our outcome wasn't good because of cost. So, what we don't wanna do is go through our process, tell us what you want for the process, you guys, because I don't wanna come back here in four more weeks and have somebody say, the city didn't do the process correctly, which has been happening and is inaccurate.
I completely agree with that, Mayor.
So, we can be frustrated with things, and that's fair. But let's work together to say, okay, let's throw out some ideas on process. Now, I want you to think of timelines when you think about process. So, there's typically two timelines if you're going to reconstruct the village green, make the most sense. It's right after the first of the year, or later in the fall. But there is absolutely no good time to redo it. And so, if we wanna take a lot more time, then we're probably gonna push it off to fall, just on logistics and what would work. That's fine. And we're still within some of our financing components. So, however you wanna do it, think about that when you think about process. Our plan, based on what we thought would happen, was that we could potentially get started after the first of the year and be done by the first of June, so it would be ready to go for the summer season. But this area is, we're so, everybody loves this area. We wanna do it right. And we wanna make sure that you guys feel that you have the process, you've heard from your constituents, tell us what you want. We already have one date already scheduled, because we felt that that was a good idea. We just didn't know what way you guys were gonna go tonight.
What's the date?
September 30th.
September 30th. Next week.
Oh, that's right.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah. September 30th.
Yeah, two weeks, and to all of your point, I think the more outreach we can do, the more feedback we can do, the more success the project will be. An aggressive schedule in the construction world just equates to higher costs. So, the more planning we can do, the better project we can put out. I would hope to get better pricing, and it has to be truly incorporated into the seasonal bidding schedule, is my, my staff recommendation here, is to really consider all of that, as we wanna put this out to have the best pricing.
Alderman Mulder?
Just a comment about the design, and I, I did vote for the, the previous one where we had the stage at the, the north end. And then, at Fall Fest, realized I think that would've been a mistake, because Rebel Grace had a stage three times the size of that. And the beer garden tent we looked at in an earlier proposal was about a quarter the size of the beer tent we had at, at Fall Fest, which was packed. So, I, I, I think this kind of open plan where, you know, I, I love the stonework, I love the benches that go around the sides, but I think all of our events are becoming bigger and bigger, and the less fixed things we have to work around, the, the better off we'll be. So, just having a giant open, you know, pallet like that, I like the bathrooms, I like, I like, I think it's the perfect spot for it. And I like the fact that, you know, Bud kept that corner open, so you have an eight-foot visual pass-through on that corner. So, it's not a hard surface blocking the lake view. Certainly, there'll be a block, there's no doubt about it. But overall, I think it's a great project. Very interested to hear what the community says.
So, process ideas, that's what we're looking for. We have one idea of trying to talk about this.
I think one listening session's fine. I think the rest of us talk to our constituents, and we come back in four weeks and move it forward if it.
So, we'll have it on the agenda in four weeks, and we'll have the listening session on September 30th at the community center. What time did we schedule?
It's usually around 6:30.
6:30.
Somewhere in that time.
And I think in the meantime, what we need to do is we need to just go out to our constituents and, and talk it up.
Just a point of clarification, there are five Tuesdays in September, so four weeks isn't a council meeting, it would have to be five.
Five weeks, okay.
That's fine. So, it'd be October 21st.
Okay. And Jason, if, if you get a decision to move forward on the RFP and the engineering on that meeting, are you in the window for it to potentially be built in the spring? Or are we, should we let that go and look at it in the fall?
Again, I, the more window of construction you can provide, the better pricing you will see. If you wanna build something in a tight, tight constraint, you will pay for it. So, there's a balance. I would, I would suggest to try to make this some level of 2026 fall, or the first part of '27.
Okay. Alderman, Spiegelberg?
And when we talk about process, I think we need to also include that we can get information out there if, okay, the eight people that are watching, that we always kid about, if they'll sign up on our website for notifications on events and meetings and, and updates. Because often people will say, I didn't know about this meeting, I didn't know about this vote. But if they would go onto our website and sign up for those things, they're gonna find out about this. They're gonna find about road closures, they're gonna find out about all of our meetings, they're gonna see our agendas, whatever it is. And Catherine Beck, if you're watching, it would be great to get that in the enterprise.
She is.
When it comes to the timing, so one of the components in the funding sources for this is the money from TIF 4, that we talked about. In TIF 4, that district is going to be closing. So, we had taken the earlier action to escrow the monies, which is $837, $837,490 for this project. Once, once the TIF closes, and Steve and I talked about, and he verified, we have one year from when we bring the resolution to council to close that TIF. That resolution needs to come in the spring of '26. March, did we?
Before April 15th.
Correct. So, more than likely, March of '26, we'll bring a resolution to close TIF 4. We have one year from when that resolution is, before we have to disperse any funds that haven't been spent. So, kinda keep that in mind when, when we're talking the process here.
So, and, and a thank you to Steve, because we've gotten a couple different timeframes of when we had to use the money. This is now defined and has been researched, so thank you, Steve, because we heard a lot of different things earlier, so, and I apologize to council, but I'm confident with this timeline. Great, I think we have a plan. Is there any other process, other than the one open meeting, and you talking to your constituents, that you wanna add?
Yeah, I'd love to see another committee of the whole. I mean, we could add a couple of those. I mean, I think additional meetings, the more that we can have, the better.
Give, give me definition, because having more, you could mean one more, you could mean 10 more, Chaz, I'm being facetious.
Yeah, I mean, we could do three.
Tell us what, do you want at the next, at the next council meeting in two weeks? Do you wanna have another discussion about?
Well, the next council meeting's in five weeks, is what my understanding is.
October 7th would be the next one.
October 7th, that's, do you wanna?
There's five Tuesdays in the month, so we're, so it's three weeks before our next council, which will fall on October 7th.
Okay.
And then the meeting we talked about bringing this back to is the two weeks after that on the 21st.
But I'm happy to bring another committee of the whole, tell all your constituents, come to it. I, I just.
Yeah, I just think the more times it's on the agenda, the more opportunity there is for somebody to see it, the more chances there are to engage about it, the less risk there is that we get unforeseen.
I agree with it, I'm just asking for definition from you.
Yeah.
One more? Do you wanna have?
I wrote it down, what you said, a committee to hold. Do it, then, do it the meeting before the, the vote. Do another committee hold a meeting that, on October 7th, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Well, October 7th isn't the vote.
Right, no, but we do a committee hold that night.
On the 7th?
Yes.
And then we could do another committee of the hold before the vote on the 20th, or whatever. So, we could have two more committee of the holds, which is, would be an open discussion.
And then one public hearing.
There's, it won't.
Public, public information meeting on September 30th.
Yeah. That would give three different opportunities for the community to come. Happy to do that, I'm just, I, I need definition, because we need to schedule it, and maybe you have a better idea of better way to do it than we do.
Yeah. So, and that's just on us determining what we're gonna end up putting out for a design for RFP. I mean, that's what we're talking about right now. I mean, then, once we get those numbers back and we have a final.
So, for example, on the 7th, Jason could go through all those items and listen, talk to you about it. Cause he needs more of that definition to be able to do it. Then you could have some input that you've already talked to your constituents. So, if we did the two committee of the holds, and then a potential direction to vote to go to RFP after that. Or, you still have the opportunity, if you say, hey, we get into October, and we're hearing things and we don't wanna do it, then we can kick the can down the road a little bit further, too. I'm trying to keep things onto point, to try to get this into a point where it can get into the queue for something for the community.
And I, I wanna preserve the green for the community, so I'm less worried about the timeline.
Yep. Well, hey, one other point on that is, we've already seen the iterations multiple times, what this kind of looks like already. The real only change is the bathroom in the corner and the side of the building. So, if, if people say, you know, two months from now, we didn't get a chance to see this, I'm gonna say bogus, because we've had a ton of this basic same plan. We've just eliminated the pavilion bathrooms, and we've replaced it with some bathrooms on the corner, and are moving the dumpsters. So, really, not a whole lot has changed. Probably what I'm gonna get from my listening sessions in my district is gonna be, this looks kinda like the other one. You know, except for the pavilion. So, I think what we've given, that, that'll be more than enough time and adequate time.
So, Rusty?
Real quick, I, I think one key step that we need to focus on, and one of these probably come, are community of the whole meetings, is the legal relationship between the city and the building owners. And I think we could probably start hashing out what that looks like in conjunction or separate from any design work, right? So, we can avoid any situations with buddies. So, I think that's something we could do in conjunction, doesn't, we don't have to have the numbers yet, right?
Correct. We can't get the numbers until we do an RFP.
Cause that's gonna be a big part of how we vote and move forward, so it's another step we can do in parallel.
Sounds good. So, to summarize and make sure everybody's on the same page, we're gonna have two committee of the whole meetings, at the, one at the next meeting and one at the.
October 7th and October 21.
October 21, and then October 21. Ideally, we're gonna ask for direction and make a request to go out, to, to finish engineering RFP. What Jason is telling us is we're probably not gonna do this in the spring, but that we will have to look at the, the potential renovations in the fall of next year, or maybe the following spring. I also think that's news to, because we're delaying this process, we also have to go back to the owners of the et cetera, because they've been working on a timeline to try to get this thing rocking the first part of the year. But, but if we're, if we're gonna get more public opinion, which is great, and we're gonna do this process, Mark and I and Jason will meet with, with the owners of the et cetera, and talk to them about it to make sure they're still on board with all of that. My guess is they'll be fine, but I wanna be able to sit down and talk to them about that. Does that seem okay with you guys? Thumbs up? Good, thank you.
The thing to keep in mind is the need to spend the monies from TIF 4 before March of 2027, or they're gone.
Or they're gone. I would strongly suggest that the latest that you start this project, cause I'll be gone, would be the fall of 2026.
And when we say gone, we mean return to all the taxing entities. So, it's not like, yeah.
Right.
It's just not available for spending in this, yeah, so let's just be transparent. The other question I would have is on, on what, you know, how will we publicize this? I mean, you talked about, obviously, we'll have, you know, hopefully we'll have an article written in the enterprise that will cover this somewhat, but how do we continue to advertise this in the enterprise? And then also through social media channels? I don't know how much a direct mailer would cost for doing something like this, but the, the more public input, the better.
What we'll try to do is we'll sit down, talk to the chamber, and see how, if there's some things we can do together with that group of people as well. We have basically three meetings for the public to give input and to talk, talk. That's already in the queue. I know the enterprise is listening right now, and I've made the request that they put the, put the date of October in there, so that we get it at least out on this Thursday. And then we'll work with Paige, and we'll work to do things on the city website, and we'll work with Sarah to try to figure out different ways. A direct mailing to 20,000 people, or 15,000.
What we do with the property tax bills, I don't know if we do it with anything else, right? So, I know, I understand, that's a large amount, that might be a significant.
What we'll do is see if there's anything going out that we could, we could dovetail on or, or piggyback on. Sometimes we do on utility bills. So, let me, we'll find out from Mark if I can.
It's a centerpiece of the city. It, it really is.
The other, the other option would be to put up some more sandwich boards, those seem to be fairly effective.
Yeah, totally.
So, I think there's some things we can do, and we wanna sit down with the chamber as well, because they have a good network, too, and can get the word out.
We had robust debate about the Rockwell Park that lasted, gotta have been over a year, right? There was lots of give and take, lots of debate. And ultimately, even though it wasn't a unanimous vote, it was pretty close to it. And the reason it got to that point was because of all the input, because of the, the arguments and, and concerns had been ironed out. I think that's why we had failure with this, this green project last time, is cause we didn't have a similar robust engagement, so.
So, I'm just gonna ask, would the council be supportive of us paying to have a sign made up with this image on it, to put on the green?
You have to pay to have the sign put up, is that what you said?
No, we wanna have a large image made of what this is going to look like, that we can put on the village green. Be a good idea.
That sounds good.
Can't get done before homecoming?
I could, I'll have to check with the guy.
Hey, Bud, Bud, can we get a picture before homecoming? Cause that place will be really full then.
Maybe we don't want that kinda input from.
Yeah, no, we want, we want.
We did that for the boat launch, we made a nice image with a QR code, and it gave information, we built a page for it. I'm, I'm thinking along the same lines here.
Cool. Okay, I think we have good direction. Are we good with moving on? Cool. Okay, I think we have good direction. Are we good with moving on? To our next item, our next item is Consider Act on Resolution twenty-five dash R three-three oh nine, authorizing the exception for the levy limits for the Western Lake Fire Department. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a new item that we haven't discussed as a community before. Levy limit does allow us to adjust our levy for increases as a result of a joint fire district. For that to be an option, that district needs to levy no more than CPI plus two percent. So our costs, that is what the Western Lakes Fire District did pass is a four and a quarter percent increase, which does fall below the CPI plus two percent threshold as of August thirty-first of this year. That condition's been met. The other condition is that every municipality served, owner municipality served, has to adopt a resolution authorizing exceeding the levy limits. So my understanding is every other community has already taken action. We would be the last. So for any of those communities to utilize that exception, we also need to adopt the resolution authorizing for any of the communities to utilize that levy adjustment. I, since even writing the memo in your packet tonight, I, I have subsequently learned we could go up to the total amount, even though our portion would exceed that CPI plus two percent. We could go up to the total amount that our costs increased from Western Lakes.
That's helpful.
I'm not advocating that we do that. And I can get in, in the workshop as we continue budget discussions, further details about what that means for us, but it would not increase our proposed tax levy. I'll leave it at that.
Like to entertain a motion?
Rosick, so moved.
Second, Ellis.
Any further questions, Alderman Spiegelberg?
Have we heard from the other owners municipalities on if they've all approved this at this point?
They have.
Just curious.
They have.
They have. Yep. Sorry. Sorry if I missed that. Okay.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Hi.
Alderman Ellis.
Hi.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Hi.
Alderman Muller.
Hi.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Hi.
Alderman McConnell.
Hi.
Alderman Youngworth.
Hi.
Alderman Rosick.
Hi.
Okay, on to the two on two thousand twenty-six budget overview. Your first budget with us, Steve.
Okay, no pressure. Big shoes to fill.
Oh, thank you. You've done a wonderful job.
So I will, recognizing that you've all been here for some time. I, I want a, a couple introductory comments. I've largely, when I arrived July eighth, much of this was already put together. So I want to recognize the hard work of not only all the department heads that made their requests. Hannah, who's, who's since left the city. Much of the work was already done before I arrived, so I want to give credit where that is due. So from picking it up at that point, I want to kind of give you a macro overview tonight. I plan to give you electronically those materials so that you can begin your review so that when we come back for our first workshop on October second, you'll have had some time both to get familiar with the material as well as to reach out to myself, to Mark, to any of the department heads for any of the areas of the budget that you want further information on. So here we are tonight in terms of schedule. Tonight, just that, that handoff of the materials in preparation for the first budget workshop scheduled for October second. We do, at that workshop, we intend to work through the general fund itself and all the departments. The second workshop, and this is following, incidentally, the same process, the same pattern, the same sequencing as was done in, in last year. The second workshop would be slated for October second. And in that workshop, we would work through all the other funds, not the general fund, all the others save the utility funds. The utility funds would come back to utility committee on October twenty-eighth and then come with, in, with the general fund and, and the rest of the governmental funds for adoption on November fourth. So I've got that timeline laid out here. So I, I'll recap it again at the end. But the purpose of this is it, it really takes and, and gives you a blueprint for all of the services that city provides, what they cost and, and a tool for you to prioritize the level of service and, and how that, how that is either funding, how, how that is funded and if there are any options, if, if you should look for changes to, to any of those pieces. Part of that adoption in November, then, as, as I think you're all aware, is, is also you would set the property tax levy that then is embedded within that budget. So all of that planning, you would actually set that levy on, on November fourth. So what you have or will receive tonight in this proposed budget summary, we, we do, we will present you with a budget, a balanced budget at each of your stations. I've given you, one, a copy of this presentation, two, a general fund summary. So just total categories of revenues, total categories of expenditures, so that you can see that it's balanced. It is that. And we are in compliance with, with state levy limit law. We've been able to balance it with what we're permitted under levy limits. The police, as part of their budget request, did come and they're, they're making some changes, some reductions in their, their support services area. I, I touched on in the last motion item, increase for fire and EMS services, our cost, our, our cost charges for those services is increasing. We are continuing in this, in this proposed budget, the enhanced street maintenance that was begun several years ago. This, this budget continues that and it continues to maintain all the other services consistent with the twenty-twenty-five budget. This graphically kind of shows you tonight, in, in the first workshop, we'll focus on the general fund. In the second workshop on October second, or seventh, rather, all of those down towards the bottom of this graphic. Just, just to add a little bit more clarity to that breakout. So focusing on the general fund, on the revenue, just as a balanced budget, the total changes in revenue will also equal the total changes in expenditures. So the total budget for twenty-six will be going up seven hundred and five thousand as, as it's being presented to you from the originally adopted twenty-twenty-five budget. So recognizing there have been several adjustments quarterly for donations and additional items. This is comparing against what you adopted last year originally in November. Most significant revenue increase is net new construction. So we were very fortunate compared to many other communities across the state. Our net new construction for twenty-twenty-five came in at three point three seven nine. So it's a very good number. I'll have a graphic here in a few slides. That translates into a permissible levy increase of four hundred and seventy-four thousand. Another item, we have a tax equivalent charge that we received from the utilities. The municipality receives that from the utilities. They are tax exempt. There is a formula largely driven by the assets that they control and manage, which is something that is part of the rate formula for the PSC for electric and water utilities. So that's, that, looking at the investments that we've put in streets over the last several years, as, as well as upgrades with some of the electrical, that, that estimate is going up a hundred thousand for twenty-six. Transportation aids, estimates based on the last year's cost reporting that we do to the state, we're expecting a twenty-nine thousand dollar increase for the transportation aid payment from the state. Last item on the, on the top revenue increase side here, shared revenue. Right now, what we have built in is a three percent increase. Since this was drafted, we're, we're, we've since learned that this week, actually, the original estimates for shared revenue next year came out, they will grow three point four percent. So it'll be nominally higher than this. Revenue decreases. As part of the finance review process, some grants that we have in the twenty-five budget, they were, were awarded. They haven't yet been awarded for next year as that's uncertain. We're, we're very deliberately careful not to overestimate revenues. Those have been removed. Courts fines, copy fees, recreation fees. We're estimating a twenty-eight thousand dollar reduction in those areas. And then cable franchise fees, as you're aware, we get a payment from cable provider in this area as people cut cords. Our share of that revenue goes down as their revenue goes down. Graphically, funding sources. So this is kind of a standard breakout of different categories of revenues. You won't be surprised to be reminded that our largest two sources of revenues are property taxes and intergovernmental revenue from the state. This shows you property tax. I, I know I told you net new construction was four hundred and seventy-four. This shows five hundred and fourteen. Part of that difference also is the debt service increase from, from twenty-five tax year to the twenty-six tax year. Not a lot of, in the interest of time, not a lot of other comments. The one reduction that I'll point out, fund balance applied, we had a seventy-five thousand reduction that we built into twenty-five for lead, anticipated legal costs that we're not looking to replicate in twenty-six.
Is miscellaneous, is that interest?
Miscellaneous does include interest, yes. So I just have a couple of slides to kind of focus on. There are two primary sources of, of revenue or year-on-year changes to revenue. So number one levy limits. So just as a reminder, we're limited to either zero percent or the, the growth in that new construction. Net new construction is the value of all new buildings built, less than any buildings that have been demolished. So as of one-one-twenty-five, we did in the month of August, get estimates. That is the, the, the main driver to what we're allowed to adjust our levy each year. Exceptions to that, debt, debt, debt levy steps outside of the levy limit, so it's not constrained. That allows us as a municipal borrower to meet our debt service obligations without, it gives us better pricing as a municipal debt issuer. Annexations, TIF closures, and this is a, a new one, and we just touched on this in the last agenda item, joint fire district increases. That's one of the rare exceptions that they allow us to adjust should you choose to. That's one of the items. And then I, I know in the past, the city has had prior year, prior year unused levy. And I, I think over the last several years, that's been cleaned up. So we're in good shape there. Graphically, net new construction to take the first of those two major growth in revenues. This shows you the net new construction percentage and then the dollars. So for our most recent year, there on the right-hand side here, a hundred and thirty-three million dollars of net new construction is what we saw in the one-one-twenty-five valuation. That equated to three point three seven nine. So I, what I wanted to point out here is that that's the highest net new construction number we've had in a decade. And yet you look at that three point three eight percent, we've had much lower net new constructions going back into the past that yielded a higher percentage. Okay, it's that percentage that gets applied towards last year's levy excluding debt service that determines the amount of levy you can increase for the coming year. So just point being that as we continue to have large net new construction dollar values, because our tax base is growing so strongly, it's becoming a smaller and smaller proportion. So I, everybody's aware of that graphically. I think it helps to sometimes give context to where we've been and how that looks.
And that's the challenge that Brookfield's having. That's the challenge some of the other communities you build out, but because, yeah, it can be a lot of money. But it's a smaller percentage. It's not very much money to help pay for increase in operating costs. So it's something that'll be really on the forefront for councils for the next five years at least.
Definitely. So I've, I've kind of laid in, again, you have a copy of this deck at your stations. This kind of lays out that, that a hundred and thirty-three million worth of net new construction and, and how that translates into the allowable levy increase. Graphically, this is what equalized value is done over the same, same time period. So we, our total equalized value grew over four hundred and fourteen million dollars from, from the, the twenty-four valuation year. Hundred and thirty-three of that was new construction. The rest of that is growth and property economic change. So growth and property values. The, that graphic is the year, year-over-year change. So the, the bar graph is the, the equalized value. The line graph, so last year in the twenty-five valuation year, we grew at eleven point one percent over the year prior. That's up from the year prior. It's down from two years ago. So just to kind of give you an idea of where we are with our most recent year. This then translates that into levy impact. So that, that three point three nine, as our levy grows over time, that percentage gets applied towards a higher levy dollar amount. So even at that three point three eight rounded, four hundred and seventy-four is very sizable and many communities would be envious of, of, of that sort of ability to adjust. The second biggest piece is shared revenue. And I gave you a, a few years here to kind of, again, set context. You may recall in twenty-twenty-four, we're at the passage of Act twelve, the state carved one penny of the five cent state, uh, state sales tax off and dedicated that to fund local government. So, and that's used to fund the supplemental county and municipal aid. I have that abbreviated here, CMA. So that value and breaking that off in the way that they, the state broke out that amount for both cities, villages, counties, and how that got broken out. The City of Economowalk received four hundred and forty-one thousand in that, in that initial year. The second thing they did, aside from breaking that out and getting it out of the state's fiscal two-year budget process, it's dedicated, it will grow with the growth in sales tax collections in the state budget. So it doesn't have to be passed, approved, anything within the state budgeting process, it flows through. That's the three point four percent increase. Right now, what you're seeing is the three percent we are guessing at before the numbers got released this week. On the expense side, again, a balanced budget, the expenses are going up the same amount as the revenues. Some of the big pieces of that increase, three and a half percent cost of living adjustment is built in for the general fund that translates to three hundred and forty-seven thousand. Health insurance, the employer side of the host, cost of health insurance went up two point three four percent. Additionally, if you recall, we changed from a non-deductible to a deductible plan. We supplemented that with an HRA, a health reimbursement account. In twenty-five budget, we are estimating a sixty percent utilization of that HRA. We're running much higher. So we've increased that to a ninety-five percent utilization in the twenty-six budget. WRS increase, general employees, the contributions required from the employer went up twenty-five basis points. For public safety, they went down twenty-five basis points. You wash the two and the size and the payroll associated with each. It's a twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollar increase due to WRS. Additional fire costs, two hundred and eighty-five thousand. It's a six point three percent increase over twenty-five. Is a big piece of that. Increase in fleet services in that one-thirty, there's an additional part-time position. There's seventy thousand for roof repairs in there. There's a number of items embedded. But that was also a piece of increases. And, and I, I should mention some of that is, is, it's, that one-thirty is not wholly on the general fund. That's the increase in the, in the fleet piece. Expense decreases. I mentioned earlier that the police department did make some structural changes to their support services area and the boat patrol, as we're now a minority, we're, we. As we're now a minority, we're a smaller proportion of the shoreline of Lakhla Bell. They've had limited patrol in the past. We still have the ability to respond, but they have removed that as a separate budget element from their budget. Those totals about 155,000. I mentioned earlier the removal of the legal provision built into 25. And then there's a slight reduction in the IT contributions required of general fund departments. Graphically, so this shows how they break out by type of expenditure, whether it's wages and benefits, purchase services, capital outlay. This is a way that it's been summarized for you in the past. Kind of shows how each of those elements have changed versus the original 25 adopted budget. Next slide shows you that same perspective, but from a department. So the way that we break out our departments, elected officials, admins. So that includes this body, the mayor's office, city administrator's office. I think you're familiar with the structure of the way that we break it out. This summarizes those same numbers from that different dimension, the different perspective. Another way that I think you're accustomed to seeing is if you look at every tax dollar, how does that break out? So this has been updated for the 26 preliminary numbers that you're receiving tonight. We've, in looking at the 2025 valuations and the assessment rolls as of 1-1, we've increased the average value of a home. It was 430,000 for the 25 budget cycle. That's increased to 455,000. So what, looking at the preliminary budget, that would translate to a tax bill for that average home of $1,891 or $158 a month? That's a $24 annual increase over the 25 budget in total. So this, I won't spend a lot of time on. This is all information we've kind of touched on in other areas. The one new piece of information on the slide, we, and again, credit and kudos to all the department heads with their initial budget requests. We were a little, we were right at 60,000 imbalanced when finance picked it up. And actually finance, so Hannah did a number of reviews and adjustments in some items. When Mark and I got it, we were 60,000 out of balance. So in looking at, so revenue adjustments, it looks like a very small number that we had one increase, one decrease that largely offset each other. One of those is the library that I think some of you are familiar with. We reduced some assumptions for library revenues to make sure that we could clear the county library exemption. Expenditure adjustments, we, there were reductions of 57,000. This kind of breaks out pieces. I know it's very small. Again, it's in your packet, but it gives you an idea of some of the varied items and the magnitude of some of those items. I won't, I won't go too far in the interest of time. But again, welcome your questions and happy to follow up on any, anything. So in total, we are balanced right now as a preliminary budget. What does that mean in terms of mill rate and tax changes? This presents it on an assessment basis. So right now, we are looking at 16,902,412 of total levy. That's operating, that's debt service, that's what you've already committed for capital. That's the total permissible levy increase, including debt service at what our debt service is for 2026. We'll get into that in more detail in the workshop. But on assessed basis, the mill rate would be $4.16, a decrease from 434 last year for the 25 budget cycle. Here is again that change from 1867 for the 25 to 1891, an increase of $24 for the year for that average home. This looks at that same average home, $455,000. Total levy up top, the breakout between capital, debt, and operations. How does that translate into the tax bill of 1891? How would that break out? Further in the lower-hand section, services that the city delivers to residents, how does that break out in terms of decomposition of that total tax bill? So aside from levy, we do have other funding sources that help support total budget. So again, following the same template ingredients that you're accustomed to seeing year over year. So in terms of major pieces, again, it's balanced. We do meet state levy limit requirements and guidelines. We are adding is what our proportional share of participation in Western Lakes Fire District. That's in here. It's a 6.3% $285,000 increase. I, in our workshop, I'll detail the use of that levy limit adjustment. It won't impact the 16,900,000 of levy I've just disclosed to you. But there's different ways that we can use that through the levy limit worksheet that's better for us over time in the future. I mentioned the police support services. So while that's been cut from the police budget, we've placed that into contingency because in the future, they are looking that for sustainable funding for future officer for the department. So if that, if that, just to let you know that that reduction has been added into contingency and it's a placeholder for it until it's ready for use. Levy transfer to capital for 25 budget cycle, that was 2140,000. So this 26, in the capital five-year plan that you approved in August, that's a reduction to 2.1 million. So that's reflected here. And then the last bullet, just making clear that state levy limits, if we reduce something less than what we're permissible, that then will reduce our ability. We can't then recover that in future years. We're limited by each year by what's permissible to increase. So that's a point that was here last year and I reiterated, excuse me, reiterated tonight. So after tonight, moving on, October 2nd is our next budget workshop. I'll take you through the materials that we have available on our city website for you. So the overall summary, I have a printed copy for you on that one pager for the general fund. I will walk through what we've called the budget workbook and then the digital, the digital workbook. So that is, the PDF is what I'm intending by that. So for the general fund, you'll get an Excel sheet, which like last year, will do the math for you, the dollar and percentage changes. And I'll pull that up here in a moment. That will be indexed to the PDF page number. So if you look at the line item in your Excel sheet, you can make notes in there. It referenced you to the PDF. In that PDF, you can click the links of the account number and drill in and look at transactions. How's that account been used in the past in 25, 24? You can look back using our accounting system and actually drill into detail. So I will go ahead and do that demonstration for you here now. So if I open up our browser and if I can click the right spot there. Get to our city website, under departments, finance. On the left-hand side here, budget and financial information. So we've got on the top of that page, 26 preliminary operating budget documents. We've got those four files I described. There's an Excel file and a PDF for the general fund. And there's a similar pairing for all other funds that will be the second workshop. An Excel file showing again, history, the year-on-year change, dollar percent change, indexed to the PDF. So I'll go ahead and just open the first one as an example. If you click on that link, you should be able to download the file. Save a copy to your desktop or wherever it is, however you organize your files. Save that to your local machine or wherever you save your personal work papers so that when you make comments or highlight areas that you want to follow up on with questions, you have that saved and you don't lose that as you invest your time and getting familiar with the changes and the pieces. So this is formatted, so your headers, the top row and the side columns are frozen. So you should be able to kind of move around. I've used the same convention over here on the right-hand side. The dollar change for between 26 proposed budget and the 25 budget. One caveat, I'll point out, this budget that's in this report, both here and in the PDF, is it incorporates all the amendments, adjustments you've made since it being adopted. So some of these comments, there's some staff notes here in column T. If that looks unusual, the big change year-on-year, it'll help give you the context of what's changed and if there's budget adjustments in there to help you interpret that number. But the same convention, instead of breaking this out between a revenue file and an expenditure file, this is just one file, trying to make it a little bit easier for you to not juggle as many files. But that key where we've got some automatic color coding, and this is the same mechanics as the 25 budget cycle. It'll be highlighted in red if both the dollar amount is greater than 8,000 and it's unfavorable. So a negative $8,000 impact and more than 8%. Same thing on the positive side. If it's more than $8,000 and more than 8% favorable, it'll show you that with red and green. So just as a way to try to help. There is a column off here again to the right, not only some of the staff notes that have helped hopefully explain some of the reasons why some of the jumps are there or what's embedded, but a column here for you to make notes so that when we get to the workshop, it's easy for you to kind of lay out the things that you want to follow up on. Or I encourage you, before that workshop, reach out to myself, reach out to Mark, reach out to the department heads. Tonight's a lengthy session, so that workshop will spend as much time as it takes. We have two scheduled, we have a third date as a backup. But we're happy to address as much in advance of that as you'd like.
Just to clarify, any questions you want to direct, they go to Steve and I. And then we'll take care of what department had and we'll track all of that. And responses will go out to everybody.
Okay, so in terms of the spreadsheet, and so don't be intimidated, there's 1,400 lines. You can do, you can do Ctrl+F, you can find things. So if you're searching for a certain thing, if you want to look for one department or another, you can navigate and then look. So I'm going to jump back to the website. And I'm going to open the PDF that goes along with that. Okay, so again, this should look familiar with the process that you followed for the 25 budget. This is all hot linked. So if you want to look at the finance department, click on the finance department, it'll take you there. If you want to go back, if you're done looking at what you wanted to look at, we've got page numbers on everything. You can, every page will have this link at the top, table of contents. If you click it, it'll take you back. So it's just a way to help kind of aid the navigation. You can jump around the document and try to make that easy.
But that version does not have the explanations of the overs and unders?
I'm sorry?
This format, the PDF, does not have the explanation of the overs and unders?
Unfortunately, no. The CAND report that comes out of our system, it won't do the math for us. So the Excel sheet does that for you. Unfortunately, here in this PDF, it does not.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, some of the overages and unders, not so much the navigating of it on the other version, but to show what some of the overs and unders were. It's not available on this, that's fine. I'm just curious.
Okay. The one additional thing and the benefit of having the PDF, you'll notice it's 136 pages. It has the breakout. So if the number is 97,000 and there's six items that make that up, this will show you the six items that make up that number if that detail is required. So it'll help explain kind of what's baked into that. The other thing with this workbook, and if you click this account number off to the side, it will open in code and with a login. And I don't know mine for this, let's see if this will work.
And if you have any problems or you want to, we have staff that are more than happy to go through it with anybody. So especially with our new aldermen, it's sometimes a little bit overwhelming. Still is, even after six years.
Absolutely. And for all the monthly financials that you get this, I know last year at Budget Time, access was established for all of you, including the two newly elected aldermen. So if that's lapsed, if you've lost your password, reach out. I can help you reset that and restore access. But the ability to link into any of those reports that you get every month for financials, it's the same functionality. You can click on, you can look at actual transactions and drill into the data. So I just wanted to demonstrate that, again, reinforce. You've each got separate logins and passwords. But that is kind of these four files. And I'll go back out to, it won't, where's it at? It closed it. So from the, again, finance department, website, budget information, that's where those linked files are. And that's, it's available to you, it's also available to the public.
Any questions or comments for Steve?
Fantastic job, thank you, Steve.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Like to mark, no staff reports today. Do we have any comments from aldermen today? Jennifer Altman-Cloke?
I have something I'd like to say. And it's kind of out of the norm for me, but I, I made some notes. And I know that the hour's late, but it's something I wanted to share. This last week has been extremely difficult, to say the least. For those of you that know that I do work for Turning Point Action, and the assassination of Charlie Kirk has been very hard to process. And it hits incredibly close to home. What I really want to address tonight is what's happening in our own backyard. The political rhetoric in our community, to be blunt, is extremely toxic. And I can honestly say that the vast majority of the toxicity is coming from one side. The rhetoric directed towards me and several other elected officials in the Lake Country area is disturbing. The same kind of rhetoric that literally, that ultimately led to the assassination of my boss and leader. Just days before his death, one of our biggest agitators created a meme placing Charlie's face above this building that we sit in right now. Alongside him, alongside myself, were images of a fellow alderman and another Turning Point employee paired with the hashtag #StopTurningPoint. We are constantly labeled with the same words that were written on the bullets that took a young father's life. The same local accounts that asked for tolerance and kindness are repeatedly accusing people who disagree with them as being hateful. We are labeled, they label their fellow Americans and Oconomowoc neighbors as racist, fascists, and Nazis for supporting different candidates than they do. They completely disagree with the fact that elect, they completely disregard the fact that elected officials are chosen by their community and that the voices of many and the majority of their fellow citizens. These are tactics, tactics of bullies and cowards. People increasingly display the lack of basic humanity. So I ask you, when will this stop? I hope that my family and the families I hope that my family and the families of my friends, whose wives, mothers, fathers, husbands serve on various boards throughout Waukesha County, will never have to mourn the way that Erica and her children are mourning today. I am all for healthy debate, and let's have more of it. Let's debate ideas and policies and never strip our opponents of their humanity. History shows us clearly that dehumanization ultimately precedes destruction and atrocity. What will your choice be at this turning point? Will you choose to turn a blind eye when the humanity of your neighbors is degraded to laughing emojis, shares and likes? Or will you call it out for what it is, and that is evil? I'm not asking for people to always stand by my side on issues, but I am asking for you to at least reach across the table and shake hands for the sake of humanity in our shared nation. What I can tell you from talking to fellow local conservatives in the Waukesha County is that there is more than we resolve than ever, we are more resolved than ever. Instead of the silent local agitators have tried to impose throughout their bully tactics, it has really only strengthened us. And I just want to thank the community for their outpouring of support in this last week, it has been incredible. And the reason why actually I was late today was because I did attend a part of the Waukesha And again, just, I just thank a lot of you guys.
Well said. Any other comments from aldermen? No additional comments, just want to echo, there is absolutely no place in this world for political violence. And we've heard the things that Jennifer has said, I've been on the receiving of some of those same very, very nasty things, and it doesn't matter what you believe in, but why not just be civil and have good conversation and debate things? You don't have to agree, but just do it so you can come together in a better way. So let's all just take a brief moment of silence. Thank you, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.